It's gonna be another minute we're waiting for one of our council members to cross the train tracks. Um, Merrill, since it's your unfortunately your last month, would you please do the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Cortez.
Here.
Councilmember Cartwright.
Here.
Councilmember Ring. Councilmember Nysley.
Here.
Mayor Youngblood.
Here.
So, um, I'm not gonna read the whole statement since we're actually two minutes behind, or actually three. So does anybody wanna adopt? Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now? In terms of time, I'm not gonna read the whole paragraph. We all kinda know what that's about. Does anybody want to move to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you.
I second.
Councilmember Ring.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez.
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright.
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley.
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood.
Yes.
Alright, so now we have recognitions and proclamations. Jenny, um, so what I will say is normally Jenny asked if I wanted to present this, but because Jenny, would you like to just present? They'll figure out why. So she, this is kinda her baby, so I'm giving this to her to present.
So I would like to call up Hillary, Rachel, and Brenda.
Okay. So Hillary and I have been friends since grammar school, so I'm very honored to be able to do this. And so I'm gonna read it, and then we'll, we'll take pictures and do all those things. This certificate of recommendation is for Wallace Specialty Painting LLC. Whereas Hillary Wallace has been a longtime Loomis resident, and during this time has become a treasure local artist, who has volunteered countless hours to numerous community service efforts, including the Loomis Library and the Loomis Chamber of Commerce. Whereas Hillary has worked side by side with local artists Brenda Dominguez to restore many fruit labels downtown. And whereas Hillary worked alongside her daughter Rachel Wallace, Brenda Dominguez, and many other family members and friends, and invested over 800 hours to complete the panels from start to finish. We're talking about the mural on the side of the Costco retaining wall. Hillary dedicated many countless hours researching Loomis history to create a mural project that reflected the true past, the true past beauty and character of Loomis. And whereas Hillary created a finished project in which letter, I didn't, I, I, take me a second here. Well, um, Merrillized a prized part of Loomis history. The fruit sheds, palm trees, the blue goose, the golden poppies, beloved animals, and the town flower. The iris will always have a place in our historical memory, Merrill. Now, thereas, I'm hereby proclaim by the town of Loomis that we express our sincere thanks and gratitude for the long hours dedication and effort you poured into the community with this beautiful artwork. Thank you.
Carol, should I just wait till after the consent agenda for my, okay. So then we'll move on to matters of interest to council members.
I have a few.
Okay.
Okay, so I have several things that I wanted to mention. The first thing I wanted to mention was our, that our budget is coming up and our meeting, and I think the budget will be released this coming Friday, and then we have our special meeting next Friday, the 21st. But I just wanted to make sure that in that budget, the proposed budget, that we did make allowance because council did provide direction to bring in a consultant to look at organization and the departments as a whole, as well as individual job descriptions, and get recommendations from the consultant on how to do all of those things. So I just wanna make sure that is, okay, perfect. Okay, so there's, I have a couple of really exciting things to talk about. One, I wanted to thank you, Carol, for Roger's memorial. That was, I think that was a really great turnout. I didn't go on the bike ride, but I'm assuming that was a good time and a good turnout. But the, um, but the people that showed up and everything that was said about Roger, it was beautiful, so I'm really glad that happened. So thank you for doing that, and the town for being, um, participating. The other thing I wanna talk about, I meant to print it out, so pardon me, I'm gonna have to read it off of here, but Loomis Ace, um, they had their soft opening. I, um, I wasn't able to go because I found out very last minute, so I heard some, uh, some people did get to go, and it's, I can't wait to be able to, but this is their little promotion about reopening up the soda bar. So it says, "We are thrilled to announce the upcoming opening of the Doc and Rose Ice Cream Bar at Loomis Ace Backyard, named in honor of the remarkable Takamoto family. Hiroshi Doc Takamoto, born in Sacramento, and Suji Rose Doriki, born in Penrin, were pillars of the Loomis community. Rose attended Penrin Elementary School and later graduated from Placer High, from Placer High School in 1934. The couple married in 1940 and welcomed their first child, Jean. Then during World War II, the family was ordered to internment camps. Their second child, Gordon, was born during internment. After, after the war in 1945, Doc and Rose opened Main Drug at the corner of Pine Street and Historic Highway 40, now the site of LBB Gastropub. Their third child, Irene, was born then later in 1955. They relocated Main Drug to the corner of Taylor Road and Walnut Street where Loomis Ace Backyard now operates. Main Drug served the community until 2018, and Loomis Ace Backyard opened its doors in June 2021. Doc and Rose were dedicated citizens and steadfast supporters of the Loomis community. To honor their legacy, we are opening, we are reopening the beloved Soda Fountain as the Doc and Rose Ice Cream Bar. Our menu will feature a single scoop called the Irene, a double scoop called the Jean, and a triple scoop dubbed the Gordy. We plan a soft opening for the Doc and Rose Ice Cream Bar on June 8th at 1:00 PM, which was last Saturday, starting with a limited menu and hours to refine our operations. We look forward to your suggestions and aim to provide the highest quality service. Our official grand opening is anticipated to take place at a later date. Thank you for your patience and continued support." I just thought that was a really exciting thing that's happening in our community, and a great way to memorialize pillars of our community, so I wanted to read that, I thought that was really exciting. And then, um, another thing that's very near and dear to my heart. When I first got elected, I really started paying attention to what, I don't know if I just started paying attention or if it just really got worse, but our horseshoe bar road and I-80 interchange. It just increasingly became more of a safety concern to me. We, we had different management then. I had multiple conversations with Sean, multiple conversations with PCTPA. We, as a council, I wanna say thank you to you guys because you also recognized that it was a safety concern, and we put it on our strategic, top, our part, part of our top priorities for our strategic planning. Anyways, through several different processes, and we had meeting with one of the leaders for Caltrans in, back in December. He agreed that it was a safety issue. He agreed on once we get through our PSR, different things, that we would possibly be in line for 1.25 million for shop money, so that is a potential thing to look forward to. But I really wanna say thank you so much to Wes because we had, there was an appropriations grant that was available through Kevin Kylie, Congressman Kylie's office, and the first one that we applied for, we did not get. But during his vacation at the beginning of May, he got word that another one was coming available. And there was a very short window of time to be able to apply for it. And while he was on vacation, he did, he applied for that, and Kevin Kylie called us and said that he approved that appropriations grant. So it is likely that, um, you know, there's still a process to go through, so there is a possibility that we won't get funded for the full amount, but the amount, the full amount was $5 million. So even if we get half of that, we are so excited, and I am so, so, so grateful for Wes to do that on his vacation time, to secure those funds for our town, for our project. That is really an unprecedented amount of money for such a small community that is not, you know, an underserved community. We are not considered, uh, you know, they definitely don't look at us as if we need any help, but he, I spoke with Kevin last week, and he said that once he, as soon as he saw the, um, the proposal and knew the area, he was, he said it was a no-brainer too. So if there's anything else that you would like to add to that, I just wanna say thank you so much for your diligence, and for your vision, and for your willingness to come alongside us and help make these things happen for us.
Thank you, Madam Councilmember Cortez. On there, just for the, the audience's benefit, so this has several more pieces that it needs to go through. It needs to go, Kevin Kylie's recommendation is, um, as Amanda mentioned, is it's unprecedented for such a small community to get this kind of an earmark in there. So his recommendation takes the, the request for the $5 million to the appropriations committee. And if it's moved beyond appropriations committee, then it's gotta go both, through both sides of the House and Congress for approval, and it's consistently, these projects are funded in full. So we're, we're hopeful that we'll be able to get this, and with this money, the $5 million plus the Interstate Mitigation Fund, we have a funded project for this process. And, you know, we're still in early stages of the PSR, project study reports, and other things we're looking at, but it's, it's a great opportunity, and I'm gonna take this moment to segue to something strategically the town has done, and during our recruitment for the town engineer, which I'll let Merrill introduce officially in a moment. We were able to actually steal the, the person that's on the Caltrans side that was helping us through this process to come on our side, that is working on our behalf now for you as the community, and that's Richard Lylee. He started yesterday, so he'll be able to help us through this funding and process in there. I'll turn it back over to you.
That was it. That was all the things that I had to say, so anyways, thank you. Uh, oh, what we got prior to, the prior council stuff? Did we get SAKA money? Oh, you were talking about that was a possibility that he put in there, so that's not a thing, yes.
No, that's not a thing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I wanted to piggyback onto the, the comments that Amanda just made. You know, we had the blessing of having a top-notch financial director for 25 some odd years, even actually more, I believe, and with Roger Carroll. Roger was a fine CPA, and in accounting parlance, to be known as having a sharp pencil is a high compliment, and he indeed did have that. And then, to put that in perspective, um, I'm going, because we, we were talking about the potential $5 million here with the, the grant, correct? Now, when we listen to the news, numbers are thrown out, obscenely big numbers, millions, billions, and nowadays even trillions. And it's hard to have a grasp on how much money that really is. And so just to put it into perspective and to also pay homage to Roger, you know, with his sharp pencil. We were part of a contract negotiation for a project that went over time and over budget. And so in that renegotiation, we had to allocate new funds to pay for it. And that's what brought up this issue of how much money did we actually have in various funds within our budget? And the mention was, we, it, it took Roger about 25 years to amass 1.1 million dollars in our unallocated general fund. So that's 25 years of not cutting corners, but of pinching pennies. Even to the extent of his own detriment, our former town clerk, Chris, um, Cricket, Cricket Strock, had brought to Roger a proposal to increase or to adopt a new healthcare plan, which would have been more beneficial to the whole staff. And Roger's response was, "We can't afford it." Her response to him was, "But Roger, this would benefit you also," and he again said, "We can't afford it." So, we're talking about 25 some odd years to amass 1.1 million dollars, and yet here we have a potential of five. I know you said it probably cut down in the process, but, right, but still. But if it were, just to play this thought out here, if it were to be the full $5 million, that's about a, over 120 years of Roger's sharp pencil at work, okay? Because like I say, we throw these terms around, millions and billions and nowadays trillions, but just to ground yourself in how much money that is, think about that. That's $120 of a brilliant man's effort. So, thank you, Wes, and I appreciate it, and especially on your vacation.
Go ahead.
I didn't even have to ask. You just knew.
Well, 'cause I'll go last.
So, um, I just wanna comment real quick about the, the grand opening of the ice cream. We were actually there on Friday. My wife and I were there, and we, we thought we were too early for the, the soft opening, which is on Saturday. We were there on Friday, and we, and there was, there was a kid there working behind the counter sweeping up. He's like, "You want ice cream?" And we're like, "Yeah, we want ice cream," and so they, we got it, and we, we, that, that whole pamphlet is there. In case you missed it, it's out on, it's on the counter right there, and so you can read it there if you want to. Couple flavors, there's like six, seven flavors. Go out and try it. It's, it's great that it's, that, that Ace decided to and Greg decided to bring, keep that, not bring it back, but keep it in the building, and then as a community, we all get to enjoy it. I do have some business. Um, so last month, Councilmember Cortez requested that the council receive a presentation in support of the Taxpayer Protection Act. Do you wanna change that? But you also asked that we pass a resolution in support of it, and I think that before we do that, it would be a good idea to hear from the opposing side. And so I reached out to Charles Anderson, who is the League of Cities, he's our representative from, through them, and he said that he would be more than willing to come out and give us a presentation. On, on the flip side of that, if the council is willing, we can direct staff to reach out to him and, and come forward with a presentation. It's before, I'm not saying either side, we, just before we make a decision, I think it's a good idea. Okay? Yeah, alright. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Jenny, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to say, Merrill, that you're, you know, I have a lot of words to say for you, but you really did a great job embracing our town, and I am so happy for those flower baskets that we've been talking about for a couple years, and the way that you worked out with our staff to be able to get water up there to keep them going. I thank you for that. I think, Carol, for the swim, I guess it opened today. That's a very important thing. That's something that I've been involved with for a very long time, and I think it's important for our community, so thank you. I also wanted to say that, um, based on the League of Cities, California Cities tour that you, that you were in charge of, Amanda and Stephanie and
Well, it was her, but I just tried to help her.
Amanda, and the, the tour that they did, and the walk downtown, and all the murals, and all the Loomis Legacy Loop. It caught the attention of Jan Arbuckle, who's the mayor of Grass Valley.
Yes, Grass Valley.
And she sits on the National League of Cities, and she recommended that our town be visited by their leadership tomorrow, to come down and look at our murals and our downtown, and then, and down at High Hand, and, and look at our town and what we've done, and also do some conversation about Costco, can't get away from that. But anyway, I'm just really excited for that. That's a really big deal. There's people from all over the United States coming, leaders here to come see that, so that's all I have to say.
Can I just comment on that? The, the league luncheon that she's talking about, that was really, I, I have to say again, I know I already thanked them, but we really had a collaborative effort from our business owners in this town. They really stepped up, and, um, and Scott from High Hand, he did an incredible tour, and talked about how he, um, you know, started High Hand and, and all the history to it, and all the different elements, and, um, yeah, Jan, I mean, not just Jan though, but every leader from every municipality that came, they could not say enough. They were so excited about the goodie bags that they received, again, contributions from our, um, our business, business owners here in town. It was really an exciting thing to be able to put on. So when I got the email, like, who do they contact for the Legacy Loop, I was so excited. I, I was like, "Loomis did it. The national wants to come out here," so I'm really excited for you to get to do that, and I'll be, um, sitting in, 'cause I'm excited to hear what they have to say about our great town. But again, thank you to our business leaders.
Go ahead. Anything else? Really?
Dino.
Okay. Um, so a couple things. Um, I wanted to thank Carol for what an amazing memorial, uh, bike event we had on Saturday. It was very well received. It was, uh, um, I think everybody, I don't wanna speak for everybody, but I feel like I know how I feel that we all felt like we were part of that family on Saturday. We were part of Roger's group, and it was just a very special event. I didn't ride a bike, but I felt like I was part of it, even though I handed out ice cream and kinda supported y'all. It was great. And if you're ever riding a bike, I don't know if you guys have seen what Carol did out there. The bike fixer-upper, it's, what are they called?
It's an outdoor repair station.
Repair station. Or you can call it the fixer-upper for bikes, but it's amazing, and it's in Roger's honor. Shows how much I actually ride bikes. I'm sorry, but still, it's, it's a great thing because he, he was an avid biker. And then, Merrill, I'm really sad to see you though. I've learned a lot under your leadership as an engineer from being a planning commissioner, to learning about the general, the general plan, and being a council member. Like I said, you were one of my mentors, um, so I wish you would come back, and maybe if we get that pickleball thing down the road, you'll come back and support that. You never know, 'cause I know you're a big pickleball person. And then welcome, new engineer. Um, we're, we're glad that you're here, and, you know, no pressure. It's gonna be a lot, but, you know, it's gonna be fun, and we're glad we stole you from Caltrans. I, I heard the rumor. That's amazing. And then, um, I have a couple things. So, um, I don't wanna release the cat out of the bag because it's on the consent agenda, but I do wanna say whether this gets voted on, I'm hoping that it will, because it's on the consent agenda. We're gonna present this, we're gonna have some pictures, but we're gonna have, can I say this now, or do you wanna say it, Gary? About the fundraiser? Is it okay if I just mention it for you? Okay. Um, there, there, Paul's Place is gonna have a fundraiser this year. It's not gonna be on Paul's birthday, but it's the week before. I believe it's the 11th of July. And everybody's welcome to come. Um, they're also gonna have meetings ongoing, and I believe this is gonna be a yearly thing? Or we're gonna have meetings about yearly after the fact to keep it going. I'll let Gary talk about that more, but it is a great opportunity for the whole community. He did so much for the town of Loomis. You know, I mean, as far back as, you know, when he was in internment camp, and then he had, you know, the Paul's kids, and then we were all, I mean, I, well, I mean, we're, it's generations of people, so, um, anybody who went to Delaware High School, I'm pretty sure the first day of high school, they mentioned the fact that, well, in my time period, that the gym was actually named after Paul. So, um, 90, 97 and forward, I mean, everybody who went to Delaware was influenced in a great way by Paul. So I just wanna mention that and say that they are doing this, whether this gets, I'm hoping nobody pulls item seven. I'm the only one hopefully gonna pull it, but, um, everybody's invited, and I'd love to see you all out there, um, giving back to the community, because it's a, it's a good effort and a good cause to do so. So, thank you, Gary, and I will move on. If, does anybody else have anything else to say? Wes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, it continued on my manager's report.
Oh, I was gonna announce you, but I thought you meant, like, that you have a matter of concern.
I don't, but I have my, uh, my manager's report, if you'd like.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we talked about the, obviously, the appropriations for the horseshoe bar and I-80 interchange, and, and I know, moving forward, traditionally, we're gonna have a finance director report, and the agenda's coming forward, but I have to say that our finance director has been working tirelessly to help on the CIP and the operating budget, and I won't even mention to what hours in the morning she's been working on these things. We, we have truly hired a rock star. We have truly hired a rock star, and I'm proud that she's with us on there, and I'm not trying to embarrass you, but this is truly an asset that we cannot afford to lose. So, with that, I will cover tonight, council, you're looking to approve the capital improvement project tonight with discussion and contributions to it. So, why the capital improvement tonight and the operating budget next week? Well, the capital improvement budget, actually, the gross value is going to get incorporated in the operating budget, so you can see whether or not you have a balanced budget on the back end of it. So, with councils approving it tonight, then those numbers will get rolled into the draft operating budget. And as requested, you know, we're going to give the council and the community seven days to review this operating budget. I mean, it's important. We've gone an entire year without a finance director, and I can say, I'm going to let it out a little bit, we have a balanced budget that's going to be presented forward, and a balanced CIP budget because of the team that was working on this piece of it. So, we will have a special council meeting on the 21st to review the operating budget at 6:00 PM on there, so that gives us time, if we get additional direction to make amendments, that we can follow up with another special meeting the subsequent week, because we have to have the operating budget adopted by July 1. So, on there, again, kudos to Amy and to Merle. I mean, taking and developing a CIP program in two and a half weeks, when it usually takes about a three-month process. Now, this is the 11th hour, the gentleman's last day is June 27th, and he's still committed to this town. I mean, I can't say enough. You know, and some things that, it's amazing how people get prideful in some of the projects that they do and stuff. And Merle, to me, was ironic, I mean, it's fitting, but this is what he was very, very proud of doing, was his project for the baskets for the downtown, and I think it's fitting. It looks really nice. And thank you, Merle.
Thank you.
So, the next item is the WW Molding's property. The council took action to repeal the property determined as surplus. The next step is obviously to do a study, you know, to see what the appropriate civic use would be for that land. Because as we went through our general plan execution, we identified there was additional needs for government resources for the community as we continue to expand. So, this, in the CIP budget and operating budget, you'll see that there is a plan to do a study, a feasibility study. It will look at the WW Molding's property at 3,800 Taylor Road. It will also look at the parking lot behind US Bank. So, these are the town's assets, and then we need to work with the community, the business leaders and stuff, and determine what's the best use of those lands moving forward. Develop a plan, come up with a founding strategy, and execute in the future. Costco, Costco's open, as everybody knows, the traffic impacts, I would say, they were minimum. And I have to say, a lot of that had to do with the design, and you know, the contributions in the design, making sure it was done right. Accelerating projects to make sure that all the frontage with improvements were done. I mean, it was no small feat, you know, kind of handling that. And my hat's off to the team, the planning department, Kristy, working with them, Michael with the building, and Merle as the town engineer to get these projects executed on there. And so, the next logical step in that process is to do a signal coordination between the city of Rockland and Loomis. So, Granite Drive all the way to Taylor will have, those signals will be talking to each other, so that you can move traffic even better. So, hats off to Merle to get Rockland to agree to do that project in conjunction with Loomis to, again, improve the traffic flow through your town. And I think that is it, all that I have. Let me get my last pager. Yes, that is all I have, Madam Mayor, unless there's questions from the council or the public.
No, I was just asking, before we started this, if you had any matters of concern, you know, because I was joking, you know. So, and then I was going to announce you, but we're good to go, so we can do the library and community learning?
Sorry, Madam Mayor.
Do you have something else?
I skipped right over. Merle, thank you.
Okay, let's not do that and say we did. Go ahead.
So, there is something I want to say to you, and I want to say it publicly. I've been in local government and in leadership for over 20 years. I always knew that there was the type of engineer that I always wanted to work with, and I've had that privilege in this past year working with you, and of course, now you're going to retire.
Go figure.
So, my hat's off to you, sir. Thank you for doing so much that you've done for this community on there. And with that, I'm going to let you introduce the new town engineer, if you wouldn't mind, please.
It'd be my honor and pleasure. So, and just before I do, kudos all the way around. I mean, it takes a village, and I really have felt a part of this community. It's, this has kind of been my sandbox, you know, and you make analogies a lot of times to Disneyland. But I'm the same way. I look at downtown Loomis, and I say, "What can we do to really make a difference and make this pop?" And I've thoroughly enjoyed my time here, giving to the community, and I've met so many neat people along the way. Hardworking, dedicated people. It's just, it's hard to step away, it really is. But given that, I think we've found a great replacement in Richard. So, Richard Liley from Caltrans, as Wes said, is going to become the, well, he has, he started Monday. He's the new town engineer. We have about three weeks of overlap to just, well, there's no way. He's, we'll get there. He's smart, dedicated, he's going to pick up on things really quickly. He's already got a head start with everything he's done with Caltrans. He's been through design, he's been through construction management, he manages projects at a federal level with Cal. Smart kid, and he's going to do wonderful for the community. So, it's with pleasure that I welcome you on board.
Thanks, Merle.
It's going to be really hard to top Merle, but I'll try my best, probably in a year.
And Madam Mayor, after tonight's meeting, there are treats and other things. If everybody wants to hold back and thank Merle at the end of the meeting, Carol's at cupcakes and another thing.
Good evening, Karen.
Yeah, so everybody's welcome to stay after the meeting.
Thank you. All right, now we can move to the Loomis Library and Community Learning Center Librarians' Report. All right, good evening, everyone. So, it is officially summer. I mean, I guess technically not quite yet, but we're right there, and that means it is time for craziness at the library. So, I'm going to go over tonight just what is coming up in the next couple of months. Normally, I do one month at a time, but summer, we sort of see June and July as being one giant marathon, so I figured I'd go through all of it. So, starting this upcoming Thursday, we have our second sensory gym sponsored by the Loomis Community Preschool. That's for the little ones, lots of fun. We already had one that we did a couple of weeks ago, where they got to sort of stick their hands in different boxes and feel different textures. There were stepping stones for them to jump across, coloring, all sorts of fun things for them to do. And so, that's going to be every other week all summer long, from 10:30 to noon. So, we'll also have one on June 27th, July 11th, and July 25th. Of course, every Friday, we have our storytime at 10:30. And then, this Saturday, we will have our summer reading kickoff party. It's going to be from 11:00 to 1:00. We're going to have snow cones sponsored by the Friends of the Library, face painting, crafts, tie dye, and of course, at that event, you can sign up for our summer reading program. So, what is our summer reading program? It's five weeks of activities that you can do at the library, while also, we challenge you to read and log those minutes read, and you can turn them in for points for prizes. And it is for everyone, it's not just for kids, but you know, adults can participate as well, and we will have some gift baskets and that sort of thing for adults to compete for. Our theme is the Olympics. It's actually the quest for the reading torch, Summer Games at your library. So, it's going to be Olympic themed, lots of sports you'll see in our activities. Starting it off, on June 19th, we're going to have mini golf at 2:00. So, if you're interested in participating in that, it's for the whole family. You can sign up for tee times, that would be great. On June 20th, Placer County Mosquito and Vector Control will be at the library for bug bonanza from 10:30 to noon. You actually get to hold bugs too, so that's kind of cool. On June 21st, we're going to have our first craft afternoon. We're going to be doing marble art at 2:30. On June 22nd, we're going to have Read to a Dog at 10:30. Also, on June 22nd, Heritage Trail Pop-Up Museum from 10:00 to 4:00. That's with the Loomis Basin Historical Society, and they're basically going to set up a museum in our community room of all of our Loomis history. So, it's really cool, they do it every year, and it'll be part of the Heritage Trail Placer County Museum's tour. On June 25th, we have our Spice Club. It's going to be focused on a vegan bacon spice blend. So, for those of you who are looking to maybe eat less meat, but still really want to eat bacon, we will have that as our blend. On June 26th, balloon table tennis at 2:00. June 27th, I already mentioned the sensory gym. June 28th, we're going to have another craft afternoon. They're going to be doing DIY lava lamps, that's at 2:30. I have Read to a Dog on June 28th as well. So, Pam, do you know? I think it's on the 28th, and I said it was on the 22nd.
It's the 22nd.
Oh, it's the 22nd, not the 28th, okay. Then, on the 29th, we will be having a matsuri festival, which is a Japanese festival, from 11:00 to 1:00. There's going to be some carnival games, some crafts. We encourage everyone to bring a picnic lunch. And then, at noon, we're going to have the taiko drummers performing, so it should be a really cool activity. On July 2nd, we're doing overnight crystals at 2:30. July 3rd, mini boat races at 10:30. July 4th, we will be closed, and sleeping probably. And then, on July 10th, we're going to do a croquet, a game of croquet that anybody can participate in. July 11th, another sensory gym. July 12th, craft afternoons will be salt painting at 2:30. July 13th, we're going to have our master gardeners at the library to talk about composting and mulch at 10:30. July 17th, we're doing pool noodle sports at 10:30. July 19th, we're going to do our second annual Chocolate Olympics, which think minute to win it with chocolate, so stacking Oreos, rolling M&amp;M's, that sort of thing. And that will be from 2:00 to 4:00. We did it last year, and we, everybody who participated seemed to have a blast, so we're excited to have it again. We will also have Manga Club on July 20th, from 3:00 to 4:00, and that will officially be the last day of summer reading. However, we are a little extra at the library, and into the last week of July, we will once again have Spice Club. And then, on July 24th, we will have storytime with our firefighters, which should be really fun. And then, our last sensory gym on July 25th, and then July 27th, Read to a Dog. So, that's the next two months for us at the library. It's going to be a lot. One last thing that I did want to mention as well, is we do, we are currently conducting a survey as part of our strategic planning process. It is going to be available through the end of the week, but it is closing at the end of the week. So, if you have not participated in that survey yet, it is available on our website, and I highly encourage you to, you know, take it, so that we can hear your voice and what it is that you're looking for at the library. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, Jenny, questions?
Just two quick things. Just a reminder that if your air conditioner goes out, you can go to the library and stay cool, because that actually happened to me. So, anyway, I wanted to remind people that if their air conditioner goes out while the library's open, it's a wonderful place to go. And also, not only all the activities, you know, the value of having that library and the tools that are there, you know, it's no secret of my, when I was younger, my little bit of reading disabilities, and I just really appreciate that you're there and encouraging those kids to read in any way that they can. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I did not say thank you also, but I will also, I'm pretty sure that all of that, what you just said is on the calendar or online?
That's all going to be on the calendar. You didn't have to take notes furiously. We do have it on our website, it should be on Facebook, you can come in and get a paper version of our calendar at the library, so that's all available, yes. Wonderful. Well, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay. So, we're going to have the Loomis Chamber of Commerce update now.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for your time tonight. I have a few announcements, calendar items mostly. Tomorrow, we're really excited to graduate our 2024 Class of Leadership Loomis. We have 14 students that will be finishing, and our steering committee has worked hard in these six sessions to teach them about everything that it is to run a community, down to, you know, what our town council does, up to even the region and the county. So, we're really glad that we've gotten these 14 students through the program, and we will graduate them here tomorrow at the Train Depot. We were going to head to the golf course, but it's going to be really hot tomorrow, so we're going to stay here, is what we decided. On, if you haven't heard, the Chamber of Commerce has decided to change the name of the annual festival that we have here in Loomis, and we are having a launch party at the Gander on Thursday at 5:30 to announce that name. So, if you're interested in getting involved in this awesome, we are not getting rid of the festival, it's just going through some revisions. So, if you're interested in volunteering your time and efforts towards awesome community events that bring people into our town and support our businesses, as well as our community, please join us at Gander at 5:30 on Thursday. Friday is our summer concert series. It's the second one of the summer that the town throws for us, and the Chamber will be there, selling beer and wine, and there will be food trucks and fun, starting at 6:00, and live music starts at 7:00. That will be a great kickoff for summer, I think, especially with this nice hot weather. Thursday, June 20th, will be our June Mixer, and we invite you all, because it's going to be down at the Blue Ox. So, not the Blue Goose, but the Blue Ox, down at the Loomis Garage. And Abraham is a local, born and raised, and now a business owner, and he invites everybody to come see what his store has to offer. And that's at 5:30 on June 20th. And then, our first committee meeting for planning that festival will be on Wednesday, June 26th, at 3:30 at the Chamber. And the reason I want to bring that up is if you're not able to make the launch party, that's an important date for you to be able to volunteer for planning the festival. And then, one note is that we will not be having our July Coffee Connection. It's normally the first Thursday of the month, but we'd like you all to enjoy your Independence Day instead. That's all I have for you guys. Do you have any questions?
Go ahead.
Okay. I just really appreciate the Chamber taking the time to reevaluate the eggplant festival and the 35-year tradition. I know that it's going to be some changes and difficult for some, but I appreciate that you're still honoring that tradition, and I look forward to being there at that meeting and working with you on that, so.
Thank you. Thank you. I should mention that there will be food and drinks, so if you're planning on coming, there's an RSVP link on all our social media, as well as it went out in an e-blast, so we'd love to know if you're coming, so we can account for food. Any other questions?
I just want to make a comment. I'd like to help out too. I won't be able to be at the meeting on Thursday, because I'll be in Hellhole with Wes for our Leadership Summit. No pun intended. I literally will be there. I'd rather be with you. I'm kidding. But, well, no, I meant like, you know, the Leadership Summit, but the name of the title, the city where we're going to, Hellhole.
I know.
I know what you meant. I know it is, I'm just making a joke, because that's where we're going to be instead. But I'd love to help out and be at the next meeting, so.
Noted, thank you. Anybody else?
I just had to say that, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, guys.
I do. All right, so we're going to move on to public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Wait, oh my gosh, my favorite part, allied agency activities. I am so sorry. I did not intentionally mean to forget you guys, so who wants to go first?
Chief Dewar?
Or, okay, Placer County Sheriff, that'd be great.
All right.
And again, I apologize, I didn't intentionally mean to do that. You guys are my favorites, so.
I'm Sergeant Welsh with the Youth and Community Outreach Unit in the Sheriff's Office. Deputy Billidoo typically comes, I supervise him. He's out sick today, so. As you can see, our snapshot, we had 285 incidents within the last month, 22 reports taken, three... taken, three of them were transient-related activities. We had three arrests during this reporting cycle, 68 traffic stops, mostly by Deputy Billidoo, 16 alarm calls, 11 disturbance calls, and 20 suspicious activity reports. I was approached by someone as I came in about fireworks, and just wanted to make a reminder, fireworks are illegal within the township and all of unincorporated Placer County, as we have experienced a lot of fire danger through the last few years, well, many years, I would say. If you see aerial fireworks being used, please notify us, and we'll take whatever action we can take. They are tough to track when they go off in the air. If you didn't see who it was and you're not willing to make a complaint, it's very hard for us to take enforcement action. But we will have patrols out looking for illegal fireworks during the, around the 4th. So they are legal, I believe, within the city of Rockland, Roseville, and Lincoln. So it is what it is when they're around our area, and you can drive a couple freeway exits down and pick them up, but they're not legal to use on our sidewalks or anywhere in the township and unincorporated county. Any questions for me? Anything else? And as far as Costco's opening, we had very little trouble. We had extra patrols out for traffic, parking lot, and security. I think that when they opened in Natomas, they had a dozen thefts the first day. We had none, so obviously that speaks well for our community. So very, the manager of Costco remarked that it was very well supported by our community and the Sheriff's Office, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right.
I think that's it. Thank you very much. Hi.
Hey, good evening. How are you all?
Good. How are you?
Madam Mayor, council staff, public, thank you for the opportunity to talk about the district. We'll hit some stats real fast, and then we'll talk about a few other things. 335 calls for the district last month, the majority of them EMS as always. You can see by the heat map, the hotspots running around, the darker the color, the more calls. You can see right here in downtown, we generate a few calls. Next slide, please. 335, 67% medical, 2% fires, 15. That's up significantly from last month, where I think we had two or three. Fires are coming into this time of year. Burning should be ending in the next week or so. We've had a few burn piles escape, so even though there's no cancellation yet, please be extremely careful. If you are going to burn and you have a permit with you, it's a bad time. I would say hold off until the fall, but wait for that notice. We're tracking a little slower than we were last year, about 3% to 4% less calls overall. Next slide, please. District update. We have a meeting tomorrow night where we will talk about our recent survey to the community. We went out to ask the public about how things are going, what are your expectations of the fire district, and we were hoping for 400 respondents, and I believe we got 425. So I'm excited. Kurt Bello in FM3 did the survey, which I believe you all used as well for your library survey, so I'm anxious to see the results. We'll be talking about our master plan. It's complete, and I'm hoping the board will adopt it. It will set the future of the district for the next 20 to 30 years with their recommendations. We also have our annual report, talking about what we did in 2023, and ISO. So ISO is the insurance service organization, and it's used by many insurance companies to set rates for the community. More so on the commercial side, but still some agencies or insurers use it on the residential side. 1 to 10, 1 being the best, 10 being you have no fire protection. Our most recent survey was a 3, 3Y. The Y has to do with if you're further away from a fire station or don't have hydrants. It's a little bit confusing, but 3 being the number, we are actually moving to a 2. So we've improved our response and services based on what they judge. So I'm hoping that helps all of the community. District tips. If you're going camping, it's that time of year, and you have a campfire, keep at least 25 feet away from your tent. Fireworks, all fireworks. Let me rephrase that. All fireworks, even the ones that say safe and sane, and you can go by in Rockland, are illegal in the town of Loomis and unincorporated Placer County, so please be cautious of that. And summer is coming. Pre-plan for your wildfire evacuation if you live in an area that's prone to that. Get an old backpack, pack it full of some stuff, your important documents, water, et cetera, as a grab-and-go in case you need it. I'm hoping you never will, but when you do need it, it's the wrong time to start thinking about it. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have. Fantastic. I appreciate your time. Have a great night.
Thank you, Chief Duer. All right. Now we'll move to public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Debating whether I should read that or not. You guys all kind of know what that is, right? To save time, because we're way behind. So basically, the premise of this is that you're able to comment on items that are not on the agenda. We can't actually comment back to you, but you have five, is it five minutes? Three minutes. Three minutes. Yeah. And we have a little thing here that Merrill is controlling, so, and you'll have a timer right here. So we can start. Like I said, I didn't want to read, because we are already behind. So does anybody out in the public, go ahead.
Thank you, Pam Blake. It was me that brought up the fireworks. So thank you. It's also, you know, for the fire danger, the animals, and for me personally, being a Marine Corps family, it's also, you know, for the PSD with the veterans with the fireworks. And I actually have a neighbor two doors down that's a Marine Corps veteran. Before the meeting, I also brought this up to, you know, Wes, because sometimes I'm at home with my laptop on, and at one time, it actually showed the clock ticking down, and I was going like, yes. But then when it was my turn, I couldn't see the clock. So I understand you have to have a second camera for that, but that's really helpful for the people at home. What?
Right there. Oh, he changed it.
Oh. Is the clock there?
Oh, there it is.
Yay. Thank you. I was wondering what was going on behind me. I also talked to Wes about, we have a banner across, you know, Taylor Road here, says Summer Music Camp, said maybe we can look into getting a banner that goes across that talks about the fireworks. The chief over there said he will, you know, change that sign at the firehouse, but it's also on the small side. You know, people don't really look at that, so you can't miss it. Every time I drive down Taylor, I see the banners and stuff. And I think that's basically it. I had an eye appointment this morning, so my eyes are still somewhat dilated. They didn't do it last year on me, so I'm having a hard time reading some stuff. So there's some other stuff I want to bring up later in the meeting, but thank you very much, you know, being able to talk to you before the meeting. Ken, congratulations. I retired from Caltrans, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave Wheeler. I'm a Loomis resident. I heard a lot of things good at the beginning of this meeting, talking about the beauty in our town. Talked about the murals. We talked about the hanging flowers. Those are all great things, and something that I'm in great support of. However, contrary to that whole thought process, is the intersection of King Road and Taylor. If you have not been out there, then the history of that is probably five, six years ago, some Delora students went out there celebrating graduation, put a big DO in that intersection, and put their class on there. Each year, that has progressed. This year, I gotta say, it's disgusting. You have an anti-graffiti ordinance. Now, no reflection on the Sheriff's Department, because I know the history of this. Oftentimes, there's a deputy who's there witnessing this, but it's gone too far. That intersection looks like something I would expect to find in Oakland. And I was in Oakland this last weekend. That's an Oakland intersection. That does not belong in Loomis. So therefore, I'm going to turn to the staff and ask them to immediately go and slurry seal over those things. There's a lot of things that had to be removed, because they were distasteful and foul. This graffiti has spilled over into the crosswalks. So if you have not seen it, go look at it, and it goes contrary to everything you've talked about of beautifying our town in the future, because I know there's a cost that's involved with slurry sealing an intersection and restriping the sidewalks. In the future, I think this action has to be stopped. The Sheriff's Department needs to enforce the anti-graffiti, because I've seen it there in Oakland. Graffiti's a cancer. If it's not taken care of, it grows. If we're sanctioning graffiti, it's not going to stop there. We've seen at that intersection how it's continued to grow. So please, staff, take care of that intersection as soon as possible. Get the graffiti off. In the future, we need to prevent it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to speak? Okay. Last call. Okay. Then we'll go to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom? Okay.
Oh, wait a second.
Oh.
Go ahead, Miguel.
Hi, Miguel Utriz, 911 Freight Court, Loomis, California. I have a concern. I was looking at the CPI, and I see where all the park funds have been put into one account called Park Funds. Have a concern about this. In 1975, the state of California passed a law basically known as the Quimby Act. The Quimby Act specifies how a town can collect the funds, and basically how they can spend it and how it has to be accounted for. My question, and I don't want an answer tonight, but I would like an answer at the next town council meeting, why the town of Loomis does not follow the law and the Quimby Act. And the other thing, the intersection of King Road, I think most of that is chalk, so if somebody would go out there with a water truck and wash it, get rid of most of the graffiti. But again, I would like to get an answer about the Quimby Act. Thank you.
All right. There's nobody else? Okay.
So we're going to probably address that when we get to CIP?
Well, if you look at the operating budget today, the one that we're still functioning under in the Parks Fund, you'll see at the very bottom of the page that the funds are still broken out on there and stuff. But when we bring forward the operating budget, we'll go over all that stuff as well, too.
All right. So this is opportunity to comment on the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered by the council to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion unless an audience member or council member requests otherwise, in which case the item will be removed for separate, why did I say comment? Consideration. I do want to make one comment to remind myself as well. I'm not going to pull item 7, but if nobody pulls it and we approve it on the consent agenda, we are going to bring it up. So I'm just mentioning that to everybody who's here for items 6 and 7. I'm not pulling it, as much as I would like to kind of get it out of the way, not get it out of the way, but I don't want to forget and move on to something else, because it's extremely important. But I'm just letting you know, we are going to keep it on there, so hopefully we get the votes for it, and then we'll bring it up after this is over, if everybody's okay with that. Okay. Does anybody want to pull, you want to start?
I would like to pull item 11, please.
Anybody else want to pull anything from up here? Okay, then we can move to, yeah, go ahead.
I couldn't hear what item he said, David.
11. I'm sorry.
Number 11?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, goodie. I'm number nine and number 11.
Anybody else want to pull any items on the consent agenda? No? Anybody up here? All right. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I will. I'll make a motion to approve items 1 through 8, 10, and 12 and 13.
I'll second.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye.
So we want to comment on 9? And then I just want to ask, is it okay if she, after she does 9, can she start with 11, then have, or David, because he pulled it?
No, we have to, yeah.
David does it first, and then you come back up? Okay.
This is real brief on number 9. I was looking at a bunch of stuff over the weekend, and there's like a typo on the permit technician job duty statement. I snapped a picture of it, but I can't read where it is on the duty statement. Where it is on the duty statement, but it says...
Essential duties area? Is that what you're looking at?
I snapped a picture of it, but I can't read. But it says the City of Loomis. Yes, that's it. Just, you know, want to bring that to your attention.
Pam, that is proof that we plagiarize other communities' job descriptions in there. And good catch. We appreciate it.
That was my former job.
Wonderful. Thank you.
David, would you like to share with item 11 relations in city codes and ordinances? Yeah, there we go.
So for item 11, which is the approval list for Project Streets for the SB1 funding, one of those streets is Del Mar, which is the street I live on, and so I need to recuse myself from this vote, I've been informed, so.
Thank you very much. I mean, no offense, but yeah, I appreciate you saying that. So that's all you need to say is that.
Right. So I don't have to leave?
Yeah, you're going to stay here. Pam, do you want to come up and talk about item 11?
Question first. Do you have to excuse yourself, since it's...
No, because it's on the consent calendar.
Oh, okay.
He is recusing himself. He does not have to step down from the dice.
Okay. I didn't have time to read all of this stuff. It came out on last Friday, June 7th, after closing hours at 5:06 for tonight's meeting at, you know, 6:30. And looking at the May 14th meeting, it was emailed on a Thursday, May 9th, at 2:35 for the meeting for Tuesday of the next week. And then I looked at the April 9th meeting, it was emailed on 4:03 at 8:10. So I didn't have a lot of time. My face was in the laptop all weekend long, and so I'm questioning whether that was enough time for the town to mail it, to email it out after hours last Friday for tonight's meeting.
As a legal matter, yes. It was posted within the time required, 72 hours before the meeting, so yes. It complied with the Brown Act.
Oh, okay. So what is the time period for the Brown Act? Is it...
72 hours, has to be posted 72 hours prior to the meeting.
Which includes weekends, right? Posted?
Correct.
And I'm not hearing you on the microphone.
Yes. Posted means... Posted means, in, posted includes weekend days. 72 hours.
Okay, good to know. Thank you very much.
Pam, I, I will note, it's not customary. I, I know Carol does an excellent job pushing us to make sure we get the agenda out well in advance on there, but there was a lot of energy and effort to get the CIP project and everything wrapped up and ready to go for this meeting to make sure it was accurate. So that is unfortunately, to delay it took us to get the item moved forward and posted for the public, and we apologize again as we move forward to the special meeting coming forward, there, that, um, agenda item will be posted for seven days for people to have adequate time to review it.
All right, so, okay. Hi, Lena.
Alena Miller, Bankhead Road, Loomis. On number 11, I just wanted to add that we on the south end of Bankhead Road are contesting that this is a public road. There are 11 properties, not including BEM properties, that are now three vacant lots. But if you include those, that's 14 people on that street that do not have any town ride, or excuse me, roadway right-of-way on that. So, um, for consideration, I would like this to be held off for our sakes. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public want to address item 11? Okay. Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Have discussion on item 11? Anybody want to motion to prove it, I'm sorry? And nine and 11, sorry, nine and 11. Right about nine.
Do we need to do nine separately since I can vote on nine and 11 I can't vote on? Should we do it that way?
You certainly can.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't matter?
Yes. I, I would do it that way.
Let's do two separate motions.
And I move to approve item nine on the consent calendar.
I second. Thank you.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, you can't do anything. Sorry. Does anybody else want to make a motion to approve item 11 or table it, whatever? Have discussion on it?
Ma-Madam-
Oh, oh, back to town.
Mayor, I think we, we need this item approved tonight and reviewing and, and Merrill, please correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, Bankhead is not on this list. Is that correct?
Yeah. So let me, let me speak to this item. Th-this item is an administrative requirement. SB1 requires by the end of the fiscal year that you, um, adopt a resolution adopting a project list. And, and all this is, is this is just a list of streets that, um, you potentially could spend your SB1 allocation on, the $176,000 that we get from gas tax. And, and strategically, you're supposed to make the list bigger than the actual streets that, that you might spend it on, just so you have options. And so th-this list includes our best guess as to what, um, this next fiscal year we, we might spend the money on. And, and one of the projects I created two years ago was just kind of this cure-all that, that said, hey, these are all the streets with a PCI less than 60 that we need to be spending money on and we're going to pick away at them one by one. And it, it was designed so that we won't lose our money, right? We can always work towards the completion of those streets. But, yeah, I, of, of what's left, we do have, um, Bankhead Road is shown as one of the projects, Bankhead and Del Mar. We were going to do patch paving and skin patching and dig out repairs, um, this coming fiscal year as, as a resurfacing treatment. But it, but again, if, if we had looked into Bankhead, we believe that it is a, um, publicly-owned-
It is a public road.
Right-of-way, and that was a city attorney determination. But I know that Mrs. Miller disputes that. But again, th-we do have to adopt this tonight in order to be able to capture our SB1 funds. And, and even if Bankhead was to be disputed, i-it's just one of many streets that potentially we could do.
So if we, when we adopt this, we, like, these are subject to change. As long as we have a list adopted, we can-
Correct.
-maneuver within that list?
Correct.
Does anybody else have the, anyone else to say?
I'll, I'll move to adopt 11.
I second.
Okay, I'm good. Danny, was it you that seconded it?
Right.
Thanks. Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember, never mind. Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye.
Okay. So, this time, should the guys like to come up? Paul's, everybody with Paul's place, he was part of this, would like to come up and be part of this process? Would you like to come up?
Okay. So I will be presenting this to you. But you think I should have my doc? Okay, I would be in for it. You want me to be in for it?
Or I'll just push it your way.
That's fine.
Oh, stay over there. I don't want you guys seeing me at 9:00.
Okay. So this is a resolution of the town council of the town of Loomis designating July 18th of each year as Paul Yukoti Day. Whereas Paul Yukoti was a unique individual in this community who passed away on December 13th, 1996. And whereas, uh, okay, Paul exemplified, see, I'm getting tongue-tied, too. Kindness, character charm, wit and caring without thought of himself. And whereas Paul touched the lives of young and old in the community over the years and overcame the residual effects of polio to become an active member of this community and, um, as a supporter of the community service and a champion of participants in all kinds of endeavors. I just want to stop here just to mention one thing. Gary did write a resolution. I know this is not sounding like what you wrote, but we found out actually, um, just before the meeting, the, um, in 1997, after he passed away, that I guess you guys, uh, tried to get this to be a, a holiday. So we're actually using the original resolution, so that's why it does sound differently. He wrote a beautiful resolution, but this one, I, I believe you may have written it a long time ago possibly, so if it doesn't sound familiar, that's why. So, um, so, uh, where was I? Okay, polio to become an active member of this community and supporter of community service and a champion of participants in all kinds of endeavors. And whereas Paul loved children and young adults and became a mainstay at Delaware High School cheering students over the years. I'm getting emotional because I went there. Whereas Paul's Place Association, which will continue in his memory, is an organization to support youth in this community through the award of scholarships to Delaware High School students and epitomizes what Paul stood for. And whereas Paul was this town's official photographer capturing much of the town's history on film over the last three years, which I'd love to see, by the way. And whereas we will miss Paul, his smile, his kindness, his ability to listen and relate to anyone who was fortunate enough to cross his path here, here. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved, the town council of the town of Loomis, that, are you getting goosebumps? I am starting to, yeah. An honor and memory of Paul Yukoti and the date of his death, July 18th from this year forward, will be known and recognized annually as Paul Yukoti Day, passed and adopted this 11th day of June by the following vote, which, that's why I wanted it to go through consent. So we are actually approving that this will be a holiday every year, um, not where you guys had it the last time and I guess it just kind of went away. It, it'll actually be a holiday now. So I'm presenting this to you, um, and we can take pictures, um, or anything you might do. If anybody has any speech or comments to this, um, you're more than welcome to say a couple of words. If you, if you'd like to say a couple of words, you're more than welcome to.
I hadn't planned on it.
It doesn't have to be prepared, just spontaneous, anything you want to say about him.
Right, right here. I can stand on, stand on this side. Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the, uh, council for this resolution and for the acknowledgement and recognition of Paul Yukoti. I was one of the original four that moved Paul from the ranch out off of Barton Road into Loomistown. And with, with that move, Paul started a, I don't want to call it a re, uh, revolution, but Paul did start something for the kids, for the town, for the community of Loomis that will be acknowledged and remembered from past years to future years. And with that, I would, I would again like to thank the city council, or town councils. Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure, and your speech was awesome. You could have, you know, prepared it, yeah. So. Paul's place, if you can, come on up. If you want to get a picture now, okay? Okay. Okay, you're sitting here. Why don't you get in the middle? Thank you, guys. Anytime. Oh, and I want to make a comment, too. Can I say about item six?
What?
I'm going to go back to my desk and I will talk about it. So we voted on item six. I don't know if you all looked at the agenda. The town council is going to be giving $750 for a plaque for Paul's place, pending, um, basically finding out if the new owner of his house is okay with us putting that on the house or on the premises. But, yeah, it says in, uh, we, y'all didn't pull it, so it was approved and voted on. It's $750 for the plaque. You're welcome. Oh, and then I, as a reminder, I mentioned earlier, the fundraiser has a lot to do with this. It has everything to do with this because, um, that scholarship goes to, you know, to, it's given to a, a person every year who I believe is an athlete and a, a role model for, Gary, go ahead. Yeah.
I will be brief. We've given scholarships to Paul's Place Association since 1987. This year was the 37th year. As of this year, we've given 93 scholarships totaling $114,300. We'd never expected it to last this long, and we're very, very proud of it, and we're just so delighted that the town council is going to help us to, to recognize Paul with the plaque at his house on Taylor Road. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. And, um-
This might be a little unorthodox, but I would just like to know the relationship. You seem so emotional and I think it's so sweet. I would just like to know how you're all connected.
Yeah, can you all get up and say what, how you knew Paul?
Introduce yourself and how you're related to him.
Everybody who's-
My name is Kathy Peart. I'm the vice president of Paul's Place Association. And I am emotional. I met Paul in 1969, and I was one of the few girls that practically lived at his house. It was my escape and that, it was just a great place to grow up and Paul was one of my best friends, so. And we, I want to make, make a little mention about the, what we're doing with the fundraiser. It's kind of a friend raiser more than a fundraiser at this point because we were doing fundraisers for about 10, 12 years of just constant golf tournaments and baseball tournaments and spaghetti feeds and all-class reunion dances. And then we all kind of took a hiatus and now we're kind of kicking back in and so many new people have moved into Loomis that don't know Paul's story or Paul's Place Association and know what we're doing. And the, the fundraising is, is continuing. We're doing this fundraiser on July 11th from 7:00 to 10:00 at the Blue Goose. $10 donation at the door, and we're inviting all the Delaware alumni, Loomis community and friends. So it's kind of a kickoff to let everybody know that Paul's Place is back in action again and we're going to start fundraising so that people are aware, the new people that come to town are aware when they see the name Paul's Place Association at a booth at a festival or wherever they see us, they'll know what it is and come up and ask what it is and maybe open their wallets a little bit. So that's what the whole point is that day, is to try and do that. His birthday is July-
18th.
18th. The 11th is when we actually had the Blue Goose booked for us, so next year, we're going to do it on the 18th and hopefully the town will support us in that and do something really big for him-
Absolutely.
-at that point, too. So thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else want to get up and, uh, go ahead? Yeah.
Thank you again. My name is Glenn Matzewoka, life, lifelong resident of, uh, Loomis. I first met Paul in the early 60s. I was one of the honorary water boys for the Delaware football team. Paul was a statistician, and one of Paul's main responsibilities for the high school was to keep track of quarters that each football player went into for each game. Back in those days, a football player had to earn 40 credits or 40-quarter credits in order to get a school letter. So one of my jobs as a 10 and a half, 11-year-old was to help Paul identify all the players that went in and out of the game. And again, at the end of the season, all of those numbers would be accumulated and each Delaware football player that earned the 40-quarter credits would receive his letter at the-
Wow.
-end of the season football banquet. Again, that's how I met Paul and my association with Paul. It continued from the early 60s through the time that I left to go to college. Well, going back, I, I grew up here in Loomis, went to, uh, Loomis Grammar School, Delaware High School, Sierra College, and then went down to San Diego State. When I came back, uh, I had a few years to re, reacquaint myself with Paul, uh, the efforts of Gary, Kathy, and others to help establish the, uh, Paul's Place Association. And then I got tied up with work, uh, having my own family and so forth. But this effort here to acknowledge and honor Paul is a, um, significant honor for Paul and, and a, um, way to recognize his contributions and his efforts for the town of Loomis, for the kids of this community, and for all individuals that, uh, come to be known as the town of Loomis. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, another one. Here we come.
I'll be brief. I had the opportunity to know Paul. I met Paul in 1974. That's when I moved to Loomis and, uh, I played football and basketball and ran track. And he used to come and photograph all of our games. And, um, later in life, then, in about 1980, I started taking Paul because now I wasn't going to Delaware anymore. And I took him to all the football games and several of the basketball games. And, um, every Friday night, it was a treat for me. I can remember in, I had a 1984 300ZX. And Paul was, um, not easy to maneuver and I used, of course, then I was a lot stronger, so, um, but I would load him in my 300ZX, load his wheelchair in the back of my car and, uh, take him to games all over North, I was going to say North America, but I guess maybe Northern California, we'll say, okay? But, um, you know, I, I think if we could share anything about Paul Yukoti, and he shared this with me, I asked him, I, as it's been noted before, he was in the concentration camps during World War II. And I asked him personally, you know, how he felt about that and if that bothered him. And he says, you know, Mike? He goes, I've had the greatest life. He goes, I wouldn't have had all of these opportunities. And I suppose if we could all take anything away from Paul Yukoti, we might take that with us, no matter what our disabilities are, whatever we do or don't have, that we could look at the things that we do have and do more with that. And, um, Paul was just a great person, a great human being, and, um, he's been gone a long time. It's hard to believe, but, um, Loomis has been made by people like Paul Yukoti, and, uh, we need to resurrect and carry on that legacy. And so I just invite you, and if you knew him, great. If you didn't know him, learn to live the legacy and carry it on, and, uh, Loomis will be a better place. Thank you.
Hello, Gary?
Hi, I'm back. Uh, my name is Gary Noe. Uh, I met Paul in 1969. I was honored, along with Paul, to establish Paul's Place Association. I was honored, along with Paul, to establish Paul's Place Association back in 1986. I'm just so pleased to be here with people like Glenn, who was one of the original Paul's Place people back in 1967, when Paul moved into town. It's approaching 60 years of his legacy and influence. Paul's been gone almost 30 years, and our plan for the plaque at his house at 3739 Taylor Road is for next July 18th, because that will be his 100th birthday. And so.
Wow.
He's been gone for 28 years, and yet his influence and importance and legacy has continued undiminished since that time. And you realize that every time you go on the Delaroy campus and you look up at the gem that says Paul Ukodi Gymnasium and the plaque of him smiling. Thanks.
Anybody else in the audience want to get up and, okay. I know that the town was greatly affected in a good way by Paul. A lot of people knew him, but I'm just asking because I know that, you know, spontaneously somebody might want to get up and say something. But if not, no pressure on Zoom? Is there somebody on Zoom? Okay. All right. So then, we are going to move to the public hearing, item 14, recology rate increase. Thank you again, you guys, for coming and sharing all that. You're welcome. Oh, by the way, anything I can do to help, please continue to reach out.
Yeah. Thank you. For this item, I'm going to introduce Carrie Baxter.
Thank you, Meryl.
She's with R3 and manages our solid waste program.
Thank you.
You guys are going to handle the clicker, right? Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Youngblood and council members. Thank you, Meryl. As everybody has said tonight, it's been amazing working with you. So I'm here, if you want to go to the next slide, to provide a few recommendations on the recology request to increase collection rates for trash service. Recommendations are to receive this presentation that I'm going to provide, then open a public hearing to receive any public comment on the recommended rate adjustment to garbage collection services, direct the town clerk to report on written comments received from the public, close the public hearing, determine if there is a majority protest, and then, if not, and council so desires, to approve the recommended rate adjustment. So rate components that come, that are presented in the rate application from recology every single year align with what's in the franchise agreement. And the proposed rates this year, the increase reflects an increase to the annual residential customer's garbage bill rate, which is between $2.78 and $3, sorry, 2.78% and 3.77% of the customer rate right now, depending on the type of service. So it just shifts based on if it's a bigger container, a larger or a smaller container. And the cost increases necessary just to cover cost of living services, so that COLA adjustment is based on the change of the cost for processing trash at the landfill and sorting out the recyclables, as well as the cost of doing service, having labor and equipment to provide the service, basically. So if that's adopted, based on what we're presenting tonight, it would go into effect on July 1st. So overall, the disposal fee passed through is just straight from the facility at Western Placer, and that increase in July 1st is 2.65%. The service fee, which again is the labor and equipment, is a 3.48% increase, and then there's no other adjustments to the special fees that are paid to the town. So all of that added together in their special ways, there's different percentages of each and how they're applied to the customer rate turn into those percentages that I talked about previously. Next slide. So this is what it looks like when we apply all those numbers to the current rate to the new rate. Basically, for the residential services, the basic service is a 96 scale and totter for your residential carts, and that current rate is 3539, would increase by $1.07 to 3646 starting in July. And then the next slide is the commercial customer rate. We've highlighted the five-yard rate. Just as a comparison, the current rate is $494.14 when it's collected one time a week. The new proposed rate would be 50976. So that's about a 3% increase. How that compares to the rest of your neighbors is pretty well. This next slide just shows a lot of information in one spot, so we have, the next two slides actually a little bit easier to follow. There's a pie chart that shows your residential totter cart compared to all of your neighbors, and you are on the lower end, where the average is $50.59, and you're coming in around 3646. And on the commercial side, we've done very similar thing, and the comparison just shows the, the community average is $490 for that service level, where Loomis's rate as proposed would be $413.40. And with that, I really, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise we can move into, the recommendation is to open up the public comment, public hearing for comments.
Okay, we can open. Oh, what? Go ahead.
Quick question. If you go back two slides with the, for the first far one, that one, why is Napa so high? Do you know?
So, and I thought we pulled that one out before I sent it over. Sorry. So Napa is closer to the Bay Area. The Bay Area tends to have everything in advance. They're, they're doing the recycling in a separate container. They're, they're trying to do more progressive things and recover more materials, and it's very common, anywhere from the Bay, you know, Bay Area, Napa down through is typically a much higher rate.
Thanks.
Of course.
That's a good question. I thought it was whine. That's what you felt, too? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion up here? Do we want to just move to a public comment right away? Okay. Okay, let's do the public hearing first, and we'll come back at the end of that. So anybody want to speak on this? Anybody in the audience? Thank you, Jean.
Jean Wilson, it's not really common about your presentation, but are we still in blue bag programs, and how do I get some more blue bags? What do I do to get some more?
Jean, Jean will have somebody talk to you after the meeting on that. The general manager is actually sitting right in front of you. He'll take care of that.
Okay.
I'm interested in that answer as well, so if you can.
We'll make sure you get that as well. All right, so anybody else in the audience? Come on up, Alina.
Alina Miller, bank head. I have a question in regards to the senior discount. I don't know, do I ask you? Like, I need to turn. I had some elderly people look into that, and they told me that the senior discount was based on income only. And then I also had a question on the unlimited, because unlimited really doesn't mean unlimited. We have had unlimited garbage service forever until here, the last year, I was told that I'm misunderstanding what unlimited means. So also, I just kind of wondering, street sweeping, where does that happen? Because I've never seen a street sweeper anywhere in Loomis.
Yeah, it's usually your neighborhood. So we, we're going to have the recology comment on that at the end, correct?
Yeah, I think that's something we can, and Tony, you're not allowed to leave, by the way. So wait for the end of the meeting, we'll have these sidebar conversations and get these questions addressed.
Okay, cool. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Are you saying we're going to address them at the end of the meeting completely? Or just at the end of this item? Because I think a lot of people out in the public would like to hear the answers to these questions, so I think it'd be better to do it.
We can do that. I mean, that's not the item before council tonight. And we're deviating off of it. That's what I was trying to keep it separate on here, but we could actually bring recology back at some point and actually do a presentation to council if that would be of interest to council.
I think.
Either way. Okay. Pam, do you have a comment?
Hi, Pam Blake. I'm so glad you're here, Tony, because I'm going to talk to you. Who, who comes up with this 10% or majority? Because that will never happen with our town limit of having 600 people, you know, protesting this. She did say if the council so desires to approve this, you know, her words, this COLA is more than my COLA.
Oh. You're talking about item 14?
No, I'm on the solid waste.
Okay.
Their COLA is more than my COLA. Now, last year, well, guess what? Last year's rate increase was 6.2 to 11%. Okay, the year before that, it's like every year it goes up, and I found this back in 2022, recology request for rate increase will increase rates on average of 6.21%. It's got my name quoted down here that I questioned the rate increase and the effect that the increases will have on people on fixed incomes. I'm on a fixed income. I know, you know, other people are. What else? I want to, I did stop by in the office to see Wes, and he wasn't in, and Carol was trying to help me, saying it was between, the vacation holds are between me and recology, and I disagree with that, because every year you approve the contract, you approve the increase, increase rates. So Meryl called me back, you know, the next day, so I talked to him for about 20 minutes. He gave me some, you know, information and stuff, and said, send Tisha an email. And I said, well, why don't you send the email and CC me, because you're going to get a better response, because I have called up in the office, and your people will not give out your last name, your title, nothing. It's private. Okay. So, so Tish, Tisha Gill, who I have her cell phone number, got back to us right away saying that she would look into it, and then like two days later, she actually, you know, called me. So if you're going to keep, you know, approving these increases and stuff, I like it to be in the contract somewhere about the vacation holds, because I shouldn't have to pay for a weekly service if I'm not at home. I was up in Oregon last month. I drove up there with my dog Katie to see a friend with MS, you know? So I was gone for three weeks. I shouldn't have to pay for trash for three weeks. So if you're going to keep approving this, I want it written down somewhere about the vacation holds and not get a third degree from somebody in your office saying that they would talk to you and call me back, and they never did. So that's my, that's my two cents. And I do have blue bags, and one time I put, I have the small can, and I put the blue bag on top of the can, I got a note saying, put it in the can. Well, I have a small can. I can't put a blue bag in a small can. So I know my. So I know my.
Pam, your time's up.
I know my time's up, but it also affects the small businesses, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to, okay, Deborah?
Hi, Deborah Crosby, Loomis resident. I did call about the senior discount, and I do find it's a little misleading, because in fact, a senior has to have earned $32,000 or less a year. So I just found that really deceiving to say that they are offering a senior discount. It should be across the board, a low-income discount for, for those living on $32,000 a year, and, or else just get rid of it, you know, because I don't know how many people are actually receiving a senior discount at that rate. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Deborah. That's a good point. Anybody else? Okay, anybody on Zoom? All right, we want to bring this back to the council at this time.
Madam Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, ask the clerk for the number of protests that maybe we have received for the item before we bring it back to council for discussion.
Thank you, Town Manager Wes. Madam Clerk.
So there, the counts for recology are, they have got 229 commercial accounts and 2,320 residential accounts, and at this point in time, I receive zero protest.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you. And thank you.
Those are written protests.
So, oh, you were going to ask that question. Go ahead.
I was just clarifying that it was written protest, and we essentially received one or two.
So are we notating the verbal protest? Yes, exactly. We're on the same page. Are we going to be notating the verbal protests as well? I see that there's two.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we'll, we'll notate the, the two verbal protests that we received tonight.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to bring it back to our council members here?
Right. So you're bringing it back to us, right?
Yes.
Okay. So these things can be talked about when it comes back for our renewal of contract? Because I, I do, I do see several small cans in my neighborhood, and I do have a street cleaner that comes through my neighborhood. So I'm just pointing that out, but you'll, you'll talk about the senior.
Yeah, all of that will be on the table for discussion. I'll tell you, currently, the town's in discussions with recology to do a two-year extension while we negotiate a contract for long-term out in there. And these are the comments that will get incorporated into that, the long-term contract to make sure that we're meeting the community's needs and the feedback. So Pam and others, and your comments, they're well-received, and we'll make note of them.
Thank you.
I would just like to clarify that she, she said that if the council so, you know, desires to, but we don't really have a choice, correct? I mean, we can say no, but in good faith, then, because we are in contract, we, it would cause, it would, there would be implications to that. Is, am I correct?
I think if you had cause to believe that the information you provided by recology was inaccurate and that the, the increase they requested was calculated incorrectly, that would be a basis to reduce. But absent that, no, you don't really have a discretion.
So my point in saying that is that we're not just like approving increases without regard, we just, we really, this is the contract, right? Okay. I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. Anybody else?
I was going to have Jeff comment, so you took it from me, so great. Thank you.
So just to note, I do have a late public comment. Are we going to not address it, or?
No, let's go ahead and, is that okay? Can we address it if they came late?
You can reopen the public hearing.
How about this? Let's let Jeff say what he's going to say, because I know that you, we don't want to lose that great mind you have there, where you were going to say something. If you forget, then.
I'd hate to lose that, too.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll let you comment, then we'll.
I think, I think the question that I'm commenting on is where do the protest numbers come from? Is that, is that the question? Yeah. They come from the California Constitution and state law. You need a protest of 50% in order for the, for the rate to be denied, basically, to be, to be protested successfully. So that's not something that the town sets, that's set by the state of California.
Cool. All right, now we can have the late comment. Thank you, Jeff.
Just one comment before you vote, can they answer the questions that were asked before you vote?
I think we're going to do that, yeah. We're going to, no, we're going to vote.
We're going to bring back at a future, at a future meeting, we're going to bring those back for a different discussion. Because the, the point is, this is not, we're not negotiating the contract right now. This is a rate increase. But, but the contract is up for renewal, and so those issues will come back to the council as part of that discussion.
And I think to add on to her question, I think I remember from earlier, you guys said that he would stay to answer any of those questions that you guys had, correct?
That is correct.
Not at the end of this area, but at the end of the. Not at the end of this area, but at the end of the meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. So there you go. All right, go ahead.
Okay, Miguel.
Okay, Miguel, go ahead.
Thank you. Miguel Yucovitch, 5911 Gray Court, Loomis. I have, I guess, a concern and a question. The senior rate really isn't a senior rate, and I think you need to change that terminology. If you want to call it a low-income rate, that's fine. My second question is, when you go through the contract, it states basically that everybody should get a green can. But when you look, and my understanding is that if you have a small can, you don't get a large green can. Is that correct? Thank you.
So again, this is a service question that's outside the scope of this discussion. And Miguel, we have your contact information, and I'll make sure that we get that answer to you outside the meeting.
All right. Okay, let's close the public hearing. Thank you, Danny. Do you guys want to?
I move to approve recommended action for item 14.
I second.
Aye.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye.
So now we're going to move to item 15, the regular meeting. Oh.
Aren't they going to answer their questions?
Well, at the end, I think he said at the end.
At the end, you have to talk about it at the end of this. We know.
Pam, Tony, he'll step out with you and talk to you with the questions you have.
Thank you.
Like right now.
Now I'll be here for the next round.
Okay. Well, then, we'll wait.
Well, he's getting up to.
Talking to.
Okay, so number 15, regular meetings start and close time. Wes, give me a back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This one's pretty straightforward. At the last council meeting, Councilmember Cartwright asked for the item to be agendized to consider moving the council meeting start time from 6:30 to 6:00 PM. And there, if you all recall, that was a discussion we had earlier this year. And it's since been time for acclamation and review of kind of the start time. And it's probably an appropriate time for council to have a conversation at this point as to whether or not you would like to consider the 6:00 PM start instead of 6:30. And for your convenience, if council does support that action change tonight, we went ahead and included in the council's policies in their discussion to reflect those changes so we didn't have to make the action item twice. So bringing it forward again at the future council meeting. So with that, I'll turn it back over. And Danny, have you had some other things you want to discuss on this item?
No, my comments at the last meeting were complete.
Good job. All right. Jenny, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah. I think I said this the last time, 6 o'clock is the standard time for meetings all through our other jurisdictions. And so I don't see a problem myself with having the meeting at a 6 o'clock time that's standard throughout our county.
Amanda, do you want to?
I agree with that. Also, you know, the later that we go, the more that we have to, you know, pay our professionals. And so I believe that 6 o'clock being the standard for all the rest of the municipalities, it would, it would be fine, especially considering we have Zoom and, you know, all of the other ways, so.
And last but certainly not least?
So I have two things. First is that in the wording of these, the standard operating procedures, it's still lists that will have five-minute limits on comments. And I want to make sure that gets changed because I went back to our minutes from February, and we did vote on changing that to three. So that needs to get addressed.
That's why I goofed.
In regards to the change of time, what's interesting is every time we do this, we say, oh, let's just compromise. And so 6:30, the 7 o'clock meeting was a compromise. The 6:30 is a compromise. And compromise, it seems like it's no longer a compromise anymore. It's just we're going to do it. And so I feel like there's, we've given up on the compromise and.
Well, we are going to have public comment, and we are going to vote on it.
I get it. But what's interesting is that it was only four months ago that we decided to compromise, and now we've, we're now decided, no more compromising, we're just going to do what we want. So for me, I personally like the 7 o'clock meetings. I don't think that, you, correct me if I'm wrong, but you get paid by the hour showing. You don't even get paid extra for this, do you? I mean, it's just, it's, so it, just keeping them late isn't going to be.
Attorney's and there's not any extra people that you have to.
Okay, I just.
Attorney, oh, sorry. Attorneys and stuff.
We can't hear your discussion.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Turn it back on. I was speaking of the attorneys. When I said paying extra, I didn't mean our salary staff. I meant like the, the experts. Thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for, the experts that we bring in.
And I don't want to, it doesn't even, I don't want to fight about it. It's just that if you get paid hourly, them staying later doesn't mean anything because they're just getting paid for however much time they're here. It's not important. The important bit is that changing it to six, because everybody else does it, isn't a super great reason, but.
Okay.
If it works out for us, and seven was the best time for all of us, I think that we, 7 o'clock is what we would pick, even if everybody else was doing it at 6:00, and we all like 7:00. That's what we would do, so.
I'll again repeat what I said last time, too. We have, what, 4,000 voters? And I have heard zero people wanting to say, no, do not have that, except for the people that are, that were here before. So the majority of the people, in my opinion, are okay with us having a 6 o'clock meeting.
I have heard otherwise, but that's, that's, I'm ready to listen.
So at this time, if there are no other, if there's no other deliberation, anybody else want to make a comment before I allow the public to speak?
No, because I had a thought, but then, like I say, I covered that in my, my comments on the last meeting, so I do not wish to repeat myself.
Okay. Well, if you decide to later, let me know. So personally, I mean, I go to bed early, and I get, I get up at 4 o'clock in the morning, I go to work. So for me, the earlier, the better. However, I do understand people that work 9 to 5, and they have to commute in Sacramento traffic. I feel your pain. I used to do that, which is why the Planning Commission was kind enough to move the meeting to, I'm just talking about history, kind enough to move the meeting to 7 o'clock because of me. Because when I worked at Franchise Tax Board, I had to commute from Rancho Cordova to Loomis and be here on a Thursday night. No, Tuesday night. Wow, that was a long time ago. Make a long story short, I feel everybody's pain. However, in my current thought process, 6 o'clock works for me. But again, I'm going to open up to the public comment because I want to hear what everybody feels about this, and then we will, we will vote. This isn't one of those things we're going to, I know, I know how you feel. I know what you mean. But I want you to understand, I'm going to allow the public to talk, and we are going to listen to their concerns as well, and we are going to vote on this. So I don't know how this is going to turn out. None of us do. So let's just see what happens, David. So let's open it up to public comment.
Jean Wilson, 4301 Barton Road. And I guess I feel like from your comments, there's not much point in my saying anything.
No, there is.
But I would like to say that all of you knew the requirements of the job before you took it. So my comments are, have no reflection at all on Danny's job, that, I want that to be clear. This is really about the obligation of your office and the council to be, to serve the public. If you notice the beginning of your staff report, it begins, in order that all members of the public have an opportunity to speak, time is limited. And I want to emphasize that. The purpose is that all members of the public have the opportunity to speak. And so for that, I ask you to please consider that what other jurisdictions do is not necessarily what Loomis does. Loomis is not particularly known for doing what everybody else does. And we may be not in the same ballpark in that, we're a small town, and when something comes up that is of public interest here, we do have people that are interested and show up. Secondly, it's been asserted that the staff wants this. We don't know if the staff was asked. Also, we don't know if the people that are required to come to give reports like library, chamber of commerce, fire and sheriff, do they really want to come early? People that have to come early don't get a chance to go home and see their family. They don't get to have dinner. Staff is often here after 5 o'clock preparing for the meeting. Do they really want to come early? I don't know. I don't know if they were actually asked. And then there are others that are coming to give, agencies that come to report, they would have to come earlier as well. So another point is getting here, public, for public access, people who sometimes aren't even hardly in Loomis, back home by 6 o'clock, much less any time to stop in and see their family or have any dinner. And as far as Zoom access, Zoom is a good thing, but it's not a total substitute for having an in-person meeting. I'm going to have to hurry. We all know that it's sometimes not, not good to have the Zoom. It doesn't work well. Not everybody has good Zoom internet access. And the PowerPoints are pretty hard to read on a small screen. Some people just want to be here and address you in person, or just be here in person. So it's understandable, Danny's request, but it really is your job to make sure that the public has access to this. And in the interest of public access, I would encourage you not to move to 6 o'clock. The Planning Commission deliberately does not have earlier meetings because we want people to be able to be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I don't think there's anything that I can say that Jean didn't already say. I concur with everything she said 100%. As far as Zoom and internet, it is totally unreliable. I have a very difficult time hearing. There's sometimes a lot of discrepancy. I actually sometimes have to log on with my computer and listen with the phone. So there's lag time. The presentations, like she said, is very difficult to read. My husband would like to attend some of these meetings, but now it's summertime, work goes longer, travel time, he works a long ways away from here and can't make it. So I agree with everything she said. I think when you all ran for town council, you knew that the start time was 7 o'clock. I think that the 6:30 compromise was, was great. And so I would like you to consider keeping it at the 6:30 time, making it more accessible for people to come. Thank you.
Cheryl Benson, Grace Road. I agree with Jean. I could not hear on Zoom, and I live pretty close, but the internet reception here in town is very difficult. I think 6:30 is a good time. If you're going to start, you've already made that compromise. But 6 o'clock, I mean, most people who live here commute from Sacramento. They don't all work here. They have to drive down the freeway and get here on time. I mean, I think the internet is a big deal here. A lot of the people that live out in the rural area, you can't even hear. But I do agree with Jean. I think she said it well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Pam?
Pam Blake, every time there's a time change, I am against it. I have paperwork going back to when we actually had it at 7:30, and then when it was changed to, you know, 7 o'clock. And I got a part-time swing shift job a couple years ago, and I was asked, Monday, Tuesday, Friday, Saturday. I said, no on Tuesday, because I come to the town council meetings and the Planning Commission meetings. And I look at this, says, it's one day a week. Go into work a little later. 2020, Danny, Jenny, David. Back in 2020, when you ran, you knew it was, I think it was 7:30 or 7 o'clock. Here's 2022. Amanda, Stephanie, David. So like they said, you knew what it was. People are either coming home, they're going to be doing their, they're either commuting home, they're doing their dinner. This isn't about you, Stephanie, or anybody else. You serve the town, and the town has to be able to come here. And I've already seen Tim bring it up at the Planning Commission meeting to move his time, you know, up. So that'll be next. And personally, I like the 7 o'clock time. And Jenny did do the compromise back in February to 6:30. David, you seconded it, and now all of a sudden, oh, no, 6 o'clock. So what is going to happen to all these notices I get in the mail? Notice of public hearing before the Planning Commission, the general plan, the Head and Grove, these all say 7 o'clock. So is this all now going to be 6 o'clock? Because if you take the time to mail this to our house, it is something important, and people need to show up for this. Zoning ordinances, short-term rental, syringe, all of this stuff. So that's my question. Is this going to get changed to six? Is the Planning Commission going to get changed to 6 o'clock? I'm still trying to read my notes. March 2019, it was changed to 7:00 PM. I know David said something about, I like the 7:00 PM, but this is, you know, these meetings are poorly attended. I'd like to see more people. Zoom doesn't necessarily work for people out in the country, and they like to, you know, like to come in. So five seconds. So please do not change it to 6 o'clock. I think it's a big disservice to the residents of this town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If nobody else has.
I think Sonya.
Oh, yeah, I was going to go to Zoom. I was going to say, I was going to close the public public and go to Zoom.
Go ahead, Sonya.
This is Sonya Coupler, Tudoray, Loomis. I just want to say that I'm very much opposed to changing the time again. It's very confusing to have the time be something in one month, and a few months later, it's a different time. And in fact, the last meeting that you had, I kept thinking it was 7:00 PM and didn't get on until 7:00 PM, but in fact, it was 6:30. So I, I'm just very opposed to the jacking the start time around every few months, and it's just kind of gotten to be ridiculous at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonya. Anybody else on Zoom? Okay. So at this time, I'm bringing it back to council for discussion. Go ahead, Danny.
I'd like to correct a misunderstanding from Jean and also from Pam. This has nothing to do with my job. I came from San Jose today, and I left early just to be here. So this is not for me. As I said in the last meeting, and I'll just recap this, the argument of changing the time prevents people from being here doesn't hold water, as evidenced by the standing room only in our previous meeting and the meeting prior to that. Ma'am?
I have something to say about.
Well, I'm talking right now, and public comment is over, so I appreciate it, but. So this has not, has nothing to do with my job, so let's correct that right now. Secondly, the standard of the area, and I also hear what Pam was saying, that Loomis has a reputation for not going. Oh, Jean. Yes, credit where credit is due, where Loomis is not known for following other municipalities, our neighbors. That still is immaterial. The argument that I made last meeting, or the meeting before, whichever it was, was that the, the hindrance, the perceived hindrance of attending a meeting doesn't hold water because if a issue is important, we have standing room only in here. And to Pam's admission, just a moment ago, our meetings are poorly attended regularly. So. So changing the time to 6:00 to accommodate staff, not me, to accommodate staff and to accommodate the experts that we bring in as a standard time is the argument, not me. That's all I have to say.
You have something to say?
Has staff been asked about this? They don't have, I just, have they?
You know, it would be beneficial if the time was sooner, you know, but obviously, at the end of the day, it's a policy decision for council. On the back end of it, it would be a little more convenient to do, to move it to 6:00 PM. So it works. It would work for staff, is what I'm saying. But again, it's a policy decision on council, how you, what time you would wish to start the meeting.
I don't want to. I mean, I, staff knows that I really appreciate everything you do. But I mean, it is your job, right, to be here. And I do know, I am cognizant of the time commitments that you put in. But really, we are up here to serve the town and not staff. And so if you, if we are bending for the staff's sake, that's fine, if the town is for it. And I mean, we've only heard from five people, which is not the town, but it's five, the five people who showed up.
Can I ask a question? Because maybe I didn't hear it correctly, and I apologize if you guys said it three or four times. How long has town council been at 7:00 PM? Like, how many years?
I think Pam's.
Did you say 2019, Pam? Is that what you said?
When did, so that was my first question. When did it become 7:00?
I believe she said it was 2019 was when they.
Okay. And what was it before that?
7:30.
Okay, and how long was it at 7:30? How many years was that? 20 some odd years? I'm just, I'm just asking, because you brought up a good point. Did, nobody knows.
It probably was since it started.
A long time.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll bring it back to you guys. I just figured I'd ask.
I just want to say, I don't have a problem coming at 7:00, or 7:30, or 6:00, or 6:30. I did sign up for this job, and I'll be here. So that isn't the issue. I am just making my comment based on what I know that no one other than the people that were here. And by the way, my comments were no different than the time that I commented before. So I didn't pre-do anything. I restated what I said before. I have not been contacted by anybody else that could not make a 6:00 meeting, other than our people right here. So again, I think there's 4,000 voters. And that being said, I'll come anytime you want me to. So that's all I have to say on that.
And I want to make a comment, too. I want to thank Pam. Well, I want to thank all of you guys for getting up and talking because you're right. You guys, whether you voted for us or not, you voted for the people up here. Some of them, all of them, I don't know. Only you guys know who you voted for. But the point that I'm making is, is that we're serving the public. And I appreciate where I was going with Pam, is I appreciate you coming up while it was shocking to see you pull out the ballots and go back. But you are right. We signed on to this, we ran, and we knew what we were getting into. I want to make a comment that I, well, I'm already making a comment, but I'm making a point that I personally, like you said, as long as I don't have to take time off work, like 3:00, because I can't make, and I feel your guys' pain on that. I can't make the day appointments when you guys have coffee connection and stuff. I work, just like you guys do. So as long as you don't change it to earlier, like 2:30 or something, whatever. But after that, I will come anytime as well that you guys want to schedule the meetings because you guys did elect us. She showed that. It was shocking, but yeah. But that brought it, yeah, yeah. For, yeah. So anyways, that's what I'm going to say, is that I'm open to that as well because you all made good points. It's not about me. You are right, Pam. But it would be nice if we had an earlier meeting. So that way, I could go to bed earlier. But at the same time, I'm at the service of the town. So whatever you guys decide. And I really know how to kill a conversation, huh? I'm sorry.
So Madam Mayor, I think we're at a point to call for a motion, if there is one.
Is there a motion either way? Right, right. So whomever wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the recommended action for item 15.
Is there a second?
The recommended action, just point, the recommended action is just to discuss it.
Then I move to change our start time to 6:00 PM.
Just to be clear, the recommended action would be to adopt a resolution changing the regular meeting start to 6:00 PM and council standard operating procedures, close time to 9:00 PM unless extended.
So I have a question on that. Because there was a lot of conversation. It sounds like we're kind of going either way on that. If there is somebody, I'm not saying I'm against this motion. I'm just trying to be fair to everybody up here. If there is a dissenting motion or an alternative motion, are we allowing that? Are we just strictly going with this motion? I'm not saying I'm making a motion. I'm just bringing that up.
At this point, there's a motion. I think we should see if there's a second.
Okay.
To that motion. If you, if someone wants to propose an amendment to a motion, we can.
Okay.
Deal with that.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Ring?
No.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Can I abstain?
Nope.
I can't? Shoot.
I guess you could, but.
You can abstain.
I mean, because it's a half an hour. I'll say no. Yeah. Because 6:30 is fine. As long as you guys aren't offended by that, I'm sorry.
Absolutely not. So if I Carol, the motion passed with majority of council. Is that correct?
We've got three, four, it's all motion carries.
How often do I actually say no? You know, and it still passed, so. All right, so we have item 16. Wes, increase, oh, Jeff, yes, that's true. Okay, Jeff, increase to town manager compensation.
Yes, so your town manager was hired in June of 2023. You recently completed an evaluation process, at which time you directed that it ought to be placed on the agenda for a cost of living increase for the town manager based on the same standard that is used in the MOU for seven?
Local 39.
Local 39. I can't remember how many employees are covered by that. Four. But Local 39 has a same cost of living adjustment mechanism. And as I understand it, there is an item in the budget that will be coming to you. And I believe there is also sufficient funds in this year's budget to cover the increase for the remainder of the fiscal year, if you are, if you so approve. That's my report. Happy to answer any questions. And just so everybody is clear out there, that the increase would be, I'm sorry, what is the, the increase would be to $186,660 effective as of June 9, 2024.
Go ahead, Jenny.
And that is based on the index that is, same index is used as our staff.
Correct. The Western State Small and Cities, Small and Medium-Sized Cities Consumer Price Index.
It's a standard index.
Yeah, it is, it is one of the.
For COLA increases.
Correct. It is a, it is an index that is used for, as we said, in this particular case, it's the index that is contained in the memorandum of understanding with Local 39 that the town is a party to.
Because I believe that that was the intent of the conversation that I heard from our council, that we were giving a COLA increase.
I want to piggyback on that and say that's what I heard as well. And I also want to clarify further. Is that like the state of California, how we have a increase based on our bargaining unit that starts July 1? I'm just confirming that, that staff and the town manager will get that.
I don't know what index is used for the state of California.
Like, well, I'm bargaining in at 1, but like, there's 9, and 12, and 11, and I think 4.
I don't know what's in.
But basically, everybody that works for the state of California will get a COLA as of July 1. So with that being said, the staff that's here as well will get that same COLA that he is getting on July 1, correct?
I believe that is correct.
That's what will be in the budget.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that, so the public knows that as well. Do we have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to just ask a quick question. I mean, we had already decided this, but I think at the time that we decided, I wasn't sure that staff was getting a COLA. And I just, is there? And there's no, there's no big reason to do it now. Is there a reason that we chose to do it now instead of with staff? I don't remember we even discussing that.
Well, that's why I wanted to ask him because I know that, like, you know, the federal, they have their COLA, right? The state's having theirs July 1. I don't know if local government is the same way, or if that's to discretion of the town or city.
It is, it is up to the town's discretion as to when you implement any adjustment in his compensation. But his contract calls for an annual review and an annual review of his compensation. There is no promise in his contract for any particular increase. But I, my recollection was that the direction was to bring it forward with a cost of living increase that was the same as would be applied to staff.
And I just want to ask an additional question because I know that there have been people in town that are asking about this, looking at the agenda. It is a cost of living, not a raise, for people that are confused. It's a COLA.
It is, yes. It is a cost of living adjustment.
Yes. That's not the same thing as a raise. Correct? I'm just putting it out there. I want to verify.
As a production raise, it's not the same thing. But David, in our, during our evaluation, we did have this discussion. You said you didn't remember having this discussion. We were, it was at the recommendation of Jeff, and we all decided as a council that we would give him the COLA along with the staff. And then we would revive, we would review or go back to.
I remember that. I just wasn't, I wasn't sure why we chose, if we had even discussed doing it all at the same time. Like, we don't, we don't control the staff. I get that. So this is us giving a raise.
We didn't discuss the time.
We did not discuss that.
What? Your control over the staff is through the budget adoption process.
Right.
And just, just to be clear, there was not a decision made in closed session to give a raise because there can't be a decision in closed session to give a raise. That's why it's on the open session agenda, regular meeting, regular council, regular agenda. And it has to be acted upon tonight. Well, it has to be acted upon by the council if you want to put that, that cost of living adjustment into effect.
So are we, do we need to take, have a motion to?
I think we have public comment.
Comment, yeah.
Does anybody in the public want to comment? Yeah, I know.
Good evening. Jan Clark Creutz, 6500 Wishing Well Way. It's a bit confusing what's happening when you're talking about somebody not getting raised and somebody getting a COLA. So it is a raise. So could you please clarify, council? Thank you.
If you, if you will. It is an increase in compensation. It is not a merit increase. It is a cost of living adjustment. But yes, it is, it is an increase in compensation.
Cheryl Benson, Brace Road. Wes is not a member of operating engineer local. He is not. That is something that they do with employees. He's an administrator. He has a contract, just like you negotiate a contract with 39. You negotiate that contract, and within it, it has COLAs and all that stuff. Because I was a state employee, too. I also was part of the union. I get it. But if he wanted a COLA every year, he should have negotiated that in his contract, which he does not have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a headache. Pam Blake, I looked at the contract before he started, and it was $180,000 annual salary, which comes out to, wow, $15,000 a month. In the contract, it says, "Town council at its sole discretion may grant annual increases." But also, the town council, I don't know if you've read it or no, but he gets a $400 monthly automobile allowance, a $75 cell phone allowance monthly. And then this started with Sean Rabey. A $3,000 annual technology equipment agreed that could go towards a laptop or a new iPhone or whatever. So that's $250 a month. So there was a closed session on April 29 to go over his performance evaluation. But my big question here is, it says, "Western State Small and Medium-Sized Cities." I don't consider us a medium-sized city. We're a small city. So I'd like to know what cities that you compared the salary of a town manager, you know, for this to give him an additional, if I can read this correctly, $555 extra each month. You know, sounds like a lot, a lot to me as a cost of living, you know, raise. I mean, you went from Colfax to here. So you're saving a lot of miles on your vehicle and stuff like that. So can somebody answer me on what small cities that you looked at to come up, to come up with this?
Please?
So again, this is a cost of living adjustment based on an index. It is the same index that is used in the Local 39 contract. We never said, I never said, and I'm not saying that he's a member of Local 39. Of course, he's not. But that is being pointed to as a measure for increases, both for Local 39, for other city, other town employees, and for the town manager. It's not, it's a, it's an index. It's, it's not a, this is not like a salary survey where you would go out and look at a range of cities and say, here's what these five cities pay. And so we're that, you would do that sort of adjustment in a, if you thought that your town manager might be undercompensated. This is, this is simply a cost of living adjustment to address the fact that inflation has occurred over the last 12 months.
Well, thank you. I know the difference between a merit raise and a cost of living. I'd like to just, it'd be interesting to find out what similar towns, you know, also make because we are a small town. And $15,555 is a lot for a monthly salary on top of the $400, the $75, the $3,000 a year, which comes out to $250 a month. So that's all I'm going to say on this. Thank you very much.
Dave Wheeler, Barker Road. I recommend the adoption of the cost of living raise. It's hard to get good city managers for a small town such as we. He wears many hats. The large-town, big-dollar manager does not have to wear because they have a lot more support on the staff. So I think this is a small item to appreciate his service here and to keep him here, stop the revolving door of city managers who can go off to greener pastures. Having been in charge of a small agency, having command over 300 employees, and then moving to 7 employees, it's a whole lot tougher to be a manager of 7 employees than 300, although I was paid a whole lot better for 300. So I recommend, in the sense of keeping a good manager and keeping continuity of Loomis government, I'd recommend that you adopt the proposal that's ahead of you.
Anybody else in the audience who's live that wants to speak? Anybody? Okay. Not to sound like Ferris Bueller, anybody, anybody? Let's go to Zoom.
to sound like Ferris Bueller. Anybody, anybody? Let's go to Zoom.
Go ahead, Sonia.
Sonia Kuppler, again, I'd just like to say that I am opposed to an increase in compensation for Mr. Heathcock. And I would also like to say that the audio on the Zoom end of the meeting really, really sucks. So I'm having a hard time hearing you guys. I have to switch back and forth between Zoom and YouTube. And so I'm having an issue with that. There's like a 20 second delay between YouTube and Zoom. So that's all.
Is that the only, is Sonia the only one?
Yes.
Okay. I'm bringing it back to council now for deliberation.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I have a few things to say. So to your point, Pam, Sean, I just want to bring to, for everybody's understanding that, that we started Wes out less than what Sean was making when he left here. He has done a lot in this year that he's been here. He inherited a lot of unsteadiness, right? We lost Roger. We didn't have all these people that he's had to put into place and Merrill's leaving and all these different moving parts. The pool of qualified people that it, that to be able to do the type of job he does is very, very small. It is not like the public's, where you can take one executive from another company and fit them in and that they would do okay. It's not the same thing. And so I appreciate your comments, sir, because it is very, we need, we need stability in this town. We do not need to lose another one. And if we do not pay our people well, I, we would lose them. And then we would have a really hard time getting somebody to take us seriously and to come on, on our town and to take us on. Believe me when I say that we have a real gem in all the things that he has been doing for our town and how hard he's been fighting for us. So that's my two cents.
We mentioned in the recology discussion earlier about inflation and inflation is driving costs. Inflation is across the board. And in inflation, which is nothing more than the devaluation of your currency, your, it'd be, if you had a, a glass of Kool-Aid and you drank some of it and then you added water to that Kool-Aid to make it a full glass again, well, it's weaker Kool-Aid and that's your, that's your current currency right now. So it takes more of the same, more, more of your dollars to get the same effect or the same product or the same service. This cost of living allowance or adjustment is miniscule as a cost in comparison to the value we receive from not only your expertise and the many hats that you have to wear because this is a difficult scale. A larger town that has a larger staff and specialized staff is, is easier to manage than having a small town, a difficult scale like this where we have all the requirements of a municipality dictated to us by our capital, yet we don't have the scale and the tax base to comfortably deal with that. So we do the best with what we have and it's difficult. That means you have to keep a lot of plates spinning, Wes, and I don't envy you for that. I don't want your job. I don't know of anyone who really would, to tell you the truth, because it's a, it's a difficult one. But I'm grateful to have you. I'm grateful for your experience. And so this compensation is a minimum token of our appreciation for you, but it's not merit based. This is simply cost of living because of the inflation that is across the board for everything, for every product and service. A merit salary adjustment could be something in the future that we discuss because I think that's appropriate for any administrator to, to be evaluated on. But that's not what we're discussing right now. And so I appreciate you. This adjustment here is warranted, given our financial situation now, nationwide financial with inflation. And I look forward to working with you longer and keeping you and compensating you for the value that you bring.
Just want a quick clarification that I believe that you were asked if it's in the budget that we can afford this. And you had said.
It's included in the budget.
In the next one. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. I guess that's it.
Then I, I move to adopt the recommended action for item 16.
Well, then I will second. Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
As a cost of living, aye.
Thank you.
So at this time, we're going to move on to the capital improvement program consideration. And this is unfortunately Merrill's last time, unless he decides to stay on a little bit longer.
I got one more meeting. Next special meeting.
Oh, that's right. The special meeting, yes.
Madam Mayor, point of order. Looking at the old rules, it may need to be a vote coming soon to extend beyond 9:30 and a consideration of maybe taking a momentary pause.
Yeah, actually, let's table this for a second. Can I get a motion to extend past 9:30 and a, how long do you think for a break?
Five minutes would be.
Five minutes, a five minute break? Is that fine, Merrill?
Yeah.
Because I know you're the one that's presenting. So, okay. Can I get a motion?
Thank you.
Do we need to move right now to extended or should we do that later?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's nine.
I move to extend the meeting until 10 o'clock for next your half hour.
I'll second.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye.
Yeah.
There's cookies in the back. Oh, gosh. Standing feels good.
Oh, sorry. Were you going behind my chair?
No, I was just standing.
Out. Oh, God, my legs are stuck to the chair. Oh, God, that hurts.
Look at the sound of that.
Yeah.
Sorry, sound like an egomaniac, I love the sound of that. A little too much. And we're gonna call the meeting back to order. Merrill, are you, you need a couple more minutes?
Yeah, we're getting a five years.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I still have my head.
There we go.
This was swimming.
Were you swimming in? Oh.
I got in the air.
It's kinda cold in here. I do, I have short sleeves.
It wasn't cold when we started.
And here's my sweater. Geez.
Okay, here we go. So, this is a two-year CIP. Kind of excited because I did the first one two years ago. And really, one of the reasons why I stayed as long as I did is I really wanted to be a part of this document that we're presenting tonight. CIP is kind of my passion area, and so here we go. Next slide. A capital improvements program, it's actually a planning document. It lists all of the capital projects that you're trying to accomplish within the next, it's a two-year plan. Identifies what funding source they're gonna finance them, and then it also speaks to their delivery schedule. Next slide. Like I said, it's a five-year plan. The appropriations are made during the first two fiscal years. So if this plan is adopted, then on July 1, the first year will be adopted, and then at July 1 of 2025, the second year would be adopted. The CIP is not the only way, though, you can create a project budget. You can also bring a project forward throughout the year, and you just, you do an appropriation from a fund, and you can create a project that way. So it's not, if there's a project in here, or there's not a project in here that you wanted, you have an opportunity to introduce that at any time. Next slide. State law requires that the Planning Commission review the CIP for performance with the general plan, and we have that scheduled for the 25th meeting, so we'll go through there and make that determination. Next slide. The projects are selected from a number of different areas. So the town council goals that we hear, and the strategic plan meetings that we do, community expectations. A lot of it is required maintenance or capital asset replacement. Development impact fees, fund different buckets of money, which I'll talk about later, and then those drive certain projects within that category. The general plan speaks to project needs. We have a pavement management plan, a stormwater plan, bicycle master plan. Often there's state mandates, like SB 1383, that drive solid waste-related projects and programs. And then there's also an opportunity with grants, like the playground. Sun Ryan Loomis was a Prop 68 grant that matched up with needs to replace our play equipment. Next slide. So, there's different funds, and somebody had once called this "different colors of money," and I kinda like that expression. But what it is, is that the different funds are different buckets, and those buckets have restrictions in terms of how they can be spent. The general capital fund is the least restrictive, and it can be spent on anything. So that's your general fund money that comes in, and there's no strings tied to that money. There's a transportation bucket, and that has to be spent on street maintenance and street resurfacing. That's the SB 1 money that we talked about earlier in the meeting. Parks development money is money that comes in usually through mitigation fees, has to be spent on parks. The drainage fund, which actually, there's no real revenue source for the drainage fund, and we were fortunate a couple years back where the ARPA money came in, and we looked at that as a qualifying expenditure, and so we appropriated all of our ARPA money into the drainage fund, and we're now going through and doing a lot of drainage improvements. But that's a separate fund. Road circulation is for widening and increasing capacity on the roads. There's an interchange fund that helped to fund the I-80 horseshoe bar interchange, and actually has some surrounding streets adjacent to that horseshoe bar. Sierra College has a fund that's for funding same thing, Sierra College impacts. And then there's a community facilities fund. A lot of these, the last four, are impact fees that we charge to development, and that helps as new development occurs, they mitigate for the impacts of their development.
Before you, oh, before you change, can somebody take a picture of that and send that out? Because like, I don't know about you, but I'm kinda visual, and I kinda like the color coding. I mean, it's a little diff, but I mean, the color coding, I think there's something about the colors, it's a little more sensory than just on that packet. Can we have a copy of the slide?
We can, I'll, we'll figure something.
It's just me being kinda nerdy.
Sure.
But I like that, the way that's, yeah. Go ahead, sorry.
There's a, there's a fund in the CIP, there's a fund description page, and we could kinda add that towards the end, and then that way.
Yeah.
It'll give the visual, sure, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, next slide. So what I wanted to do is kinda go through each bucket of money, and talk about the different projects that we're programming. So in the general capital, again, this is the least restrictive. This document's different than two years ago, in that two years ago, it was kind of the first CIP that we had cobbled together, and so everything in that document was proposed for new funding. What we have here is there's some, quite a bit of actually existing projects that are already funded, and then this document is doing recommended appropriations that adds to that. And so they'll either add more budget to existing projects, in some cases, we defunded projects in order to recycle that money back into the fund that could be reallocated to new projects. But this is a little more complicated because it blends the old and the new into one document. And so, in presenting that, what I wanted you to go through and say, okay, so for the general capital, we have some existing projects we're still working on, and then there's the new projects. And so existing, for example, we've talked about doing traffic count speed studies, that's in the works. We have a document scanning for all of the engineering records. There's a security camera upgrades project. The welcome sign's just about done, it just needs lighting. We're working with the railroad to get a permanent power source for that. And then the traffic calming is kind of a as-needed category that might help to fund Rutherford Canyon, if there's enough support with the speed lumps. New projects, Brace Road, we got a grant, $318,000 grant. And so there's matching funds that go to pave Brace from Sierra College to the overcrossing. We're gonna do a downtown parking feasibility study. There's this year's resurfacing project. There's a Taylor Road corridor study, where we're gonna look at potential traffic impacts from the north to the south, the full town limits and see what type of mitigation measures might help to calm traffic, improve circulation. Payment management, condition assessment, that's something that's required every five years, and we did it last in 2020. So we have to go through and score our streets, and then put that back into our payment management database to help us determine which streets are next. There's HCP pedestrian crossing improvements, which was a federal grant that we got for restriping the edge of roadway lines to the new standard, which is six inches instead of four. And then there's also putting all of the crosswalks we have as high-visibility crosswalks, and I think there's two locations that'll get the flashing beacons as well. So that was a grant we got. The Sierra College Railroad Improvements Project, we talked about a few meetings back, where unfortunately, the CPUC kinda put a kibosh on us being able to open up two lanes in each direction on Sierra College across the tracks, or across Taylor. And so, we need to work with the CPUC and the railroad and do some fairly significant railroad improvements. There's extra lanes that have to be done, the crossing gates have to be widened, there's a train preemption system that has to be designed. So that's, that's in here as a general capital fund. And then, if you notice, the Costco intersection, the new standard is for signals to have that yellow border around the, yeah. So there's a project in here to do that in all of our signals as well. So, next slide. And that was, that was the biggest one, obviously, the general fund, so these will go quicker. But I thought it'd be important, at least to hear the type of projects that we're proposing. So, in the transportation fund, citywide striping and signage, there's a lot of work that the roadway Public Works crews did with paint, that we're gonna do with thermoplastic, which lasts longer, it's a melted plastic product, to stripe some of the fading striping in town. There's a Signalator Connect project, which is another federal grant we have to interconnect Taylor, King, and Swetzer. And then we have new projects, which is the funding of our annual resurfacing projects with the SB 1 funding for '24 and '25. Next slide. In the parks project, so we've talked about the park shade improvement project for Blue Anchor Park, and I've actually got it about a 95% design, so hopefully that can come to the next meeting. And then we can get it out for bid, the shade sales and trees. And then, as part of that, a new project would be to resurface the rubberized play surfacing at the Blue Anchor, the train playground. That surface is deteriorated and weathered, and so this will replace that. Next slide. On drainage, and I'm, sorry, on the right-hand side of all these slides, I've been putting a graphic that shows, blue is existing and red is new, and then the white at the top is the amount of funds remaining. Actually, let's back up, Carol, I'm sorry, and I'll just go back to the general fund. I should've been pointing out as it goes. So the blue ties to existing projects. So what this shows is that there's only 185,000 of existing projects, and most of this, this 1.25 million, is new projects that is being allocated out of the general capital reserves. And what's left, this 207, that's what's left in the fund balance, that if a project goes over budget, if it's bid, and it's, the bids are higher than we expected, you can appropriate money out of the fund balance that way. But there's not much cushion left in the general capital reserves fund. Now, this is, this is the capital portion of the general fund, there's also capital reserves, and there's operating budget capital, but this is the portion that's allocated towards capital projects. And so it shows, again, a little bit of existing, a lot of new, and then a little bit of reserve for other projects. Next slide. So transportation, again, most of what we're working on here, the 813 are existing projects, wrapping those up, and then 650 is for the two years of street resurfacing with very little left over. Next slide. Park development, the existing one, the 275 is what we're looking at to do the shade projects, shade and trees. The 75 is the playground resurfacing, and then the 283 is what would be left in this fund after we do all these projects. Next slide. Drainage, so this doesn't show any new projects, and it shows very little capacity to do any new projects, and the blue is pretty much all of the ARPA money. And a lot of this is underway. The street culvert crossing is in construction now, you'll see traffic control, and we're doing that work right now. That's for replacing all these deteriorated corrugated metal pipes. Rachel Lane Storm Drain's in design, and then the storm drain channel cleaning equipment, that's a Public Works purchasing, and the Humphrey Road ditch is, that's still to design. But these are all existing projects that were approved in the last cycle. Next slide. Road circulation, so again, most of this, the 1375 is being used to pay for the Sierra College widening project, and then just a small portion of this is helping to augment this summer's street resurfacing project, the 110, and then it shows the 299 remaining in the fund balance. Next slide. The interchange fund is probably the biggest fund that we have that's accumulated over time. And again, these are impact fees that developers pay to the different buckets as mitigation for their improvements. So Costco, for example, was a big contributor to all these impact fees. The project study report has already been funded, that was appropriated kind of mid-year. One of the action items, the council was to fund the project study report. There's an amendment in this document that'll add additional funds to that, because we're expecting the cost to be a little bit higher. I think the budget was 250, and now it's 325. And then as far as the new project, it's also the horseshoe bar interchange, but it would be the design. And these are two years of numbers, and so the design is expected to start sometime during the, not the next fiscal year, but the one after. And then it shows the $3.1 million. The construction cost of this project is probably in the six, six and a half range, and so hopefully, we get the money you were talking about with Kevin Kile, and then that would fully fund it with the $5 million. But if not, then yeah, there would be a shortfall for this project to get it done. Next slide. Sierra College, so this fund, the existing, again, is the widening, and I've mentioned widening before, and that's because some projects have multiple funding sources, that get funded from different buckets, and this is one of those examples where Sierra College funds have to be spent on Sierra College. And so, Sierra College widening, and then the Sierra College resurfacing is the rubber chip seal that we did last year to prevent potholes and hold that street down. And then we also have, I skipped the intersection of Sierra College and King, that's gonna get an actual overlay, because of the breaking motion in and around directly at that intersection, the rubber chip's not as suitable. So that'll happen as part of an existing project, and then, again, a little bit of money for the street resurfacing program. Next slide. Community facilities, I think this is the last one. And they define facilities as, it's not like a building, it's actually like a sidewalk or a bike lane, it's infrastructure, if you will. And so, it can be facilities, like in this case, the Town Hall HVAC modifications is an existing project that's funded at '25, and then there's a gap closure, which is a new facility, it's a new sidewalk pedestrian access, that we've talked about doing on Humphrey, that'll come forward as a new project. And then this has 752 in funding. This has to be for new facilities, so you can't like overlay streets with this funds, it has to be for expansion, expansion use. Next slide. So if you add all these up, all of these different colors of money, you end up with a program that's about $10 million, the funded CIP. And this is the existing, and the coming fiscal year, '24, '25, and then the following one, '25, '26, because it's a two-year CIP. So with all of those projects, you're looking at about $10 million worth of projects that would have appropriations in order to move forward on. Next slide. Oh, I put the same slide in, because I put that little thing in the corner. I should've deleted the other one, I'm sorry. But what I wanted to point out here was the percentage, again, of what's existing, what's fiscal year '24, '25, and '25, '26. Most of what we're doing, 65% is just existing projects, continuing with the plan that we did two years ago. 20% of it is next year, and then 14% is the following. So, next slide. The fund balance projection, so this is just another way of looking at what I was talking about. The different funds are listed on the far left, and if you go across, this is what's projected to be the ending fund balance. And so, like if you look at the transportation fund, for example, at the end of fiscal year '24, '25, we're projected to have $26,000 in the fund balance, and then the next year, the end of that year is $11,000. And there's spreadsheets in the CIP that show exactly how that money either gets appropriated to projects or revenue that comes in, and how these numbers change. But the important thing to look at is that you've balanced your projects that you're wanting to budget with the money that you have over the first two years, which is what you're adopting. So if you look at this table, it does show that fiscal year '24, '25, and '25, '26, all of those funds are in the black, they're all balanced, and they have a reserve after funding all of the project needs. Beyond that, for the remaining three fiscal years, those are, those are planning years, and we put them in there just as far as, here's the needs that if we had all the money in the world, we'd love to do. And so, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the different funds have the ability to fund those needs. And so, in this case, if you look at, there's a couple of, the interchange gets negative on the far out year, and that's because that's when we're hoping to do the construction. And like I showed before, the construction was a $6 million project, but the fund doesn't have it, so it goes negative. Same thing with Sierra College, there's a couple negatives, and then the general capital also goes negative. But what happens is that the end of two years, the CIP is proposed for adoption for the first two years, and then it comes back to the council two years from now, and it gives you a chance to kinda juggle, okay, do we still wanna keep doing the ones we're doing? Or do you defund them? Maybe Costco generated more revenue than we thought, in which case we can fill some of these buckets up and fund some of those needs, or maybe we still don't have the, it gives you a chance to revisit this at the end of two years. And so, you really don't look at years three, four, or five, other than just for planning purposes. So the fact that they're in the red isn't, isn't a fatal flaw to the document, because you're just appropriating the first two years. Next slide. Project delivery, so it's prioritized, grants, grants sometimes have a deadline that you have to complete them by. Regulatory requirements, same thing, you have deadlines. Council goals, community expectations, those can push things to the front, if there's a higher desire to do things. And same thing with deferred maintenance, that if you continue to not do a street project, for example, it'll deteriorate, and it becomes more and more costly to fix later when you finally get to it. Delivery, as far as our timing, our ability to get these things out, seasonal, usually there's a construction season that you do in the summertime. And then we still do have, it's just one engineer that's authorized. We have a lot of consultants that help us with design and project management and construction management and whatnot, but sometimes that final review and buy-in by the one engineer we have can become a constraint. Next slide. That said, there's actually, it's in the staff report as an attachment, I put a, kind of a delivery schedule, I juggled them on this one to show short, medium, and long-term in terms of timing. And so, this just identifies, this is the existing projects that we have, and most of the ones that say short is because they're either in construction now, or they're about to go into construction. And these are just the ones I talked about earlier. It's just the plan that we have in terms of what we're working on now, and then what we'll work on later. Next slide. And this is proposed projects, same thing, there's kind of an implementation schedule in terms of, once the CIP is adopted and there's new money for the new projects, then they also fit into a timeframe of short, medium, and long-term timeframe. So, next slide. I think that is it. So that is our two-year CIP. And I was gonna start out, I had a note right there, to thank the finance department, because I couldn't have done this without Amy's help, really. She was, like Wes said, look, working long into the night to get me those starting balance numbers, and that's critical to then being able to figure out which projects you can do, and whether the fund balances and whatnot. So it was really a team effort that she rose to the occasion, so thank you.
Merrill, again, I apologize to Annie, if you don't mind me, for, to Merrill's horn, and Sean's vision, and Merrill's to put the CIP together, for a small jurisdiction like this, to have something that's so comprehensive in the funding pots that we have is, is almost unheard of. So, to get this document, to have these fundings and these programs and everything moving forward, it's just wonderful. I mean, what a great way to represent to the community the improvements, and how we're executing these projects in a timely way to get things done. It's just, it's just, sorry, in my opinion, excellent.
And I just wanna say, I like the parts where you showed the money that is still left over, that we actually, whether you overestimated, and you actually had money that we didn't spend, that's good, because it shows that we're actually being more conservative than we thought. So I do like to see that.
And his colored money sheets is on the PowerPoints, and I can just, I can email you guys the PowerPoints, okay?
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
I have a bunch of questions.
Great.
You knew I would.
You knew I would. Okay. So first of all, is there a plan to study the bridges around town at some point? Is that, would that go in this?
Yeah, the bridges, I didn't mention it, but at the back of the document is a section of future projects that are unfunded. And it's kind of okay. So at what point is it an unfunded future project you don't even mention? Or is it, what point do you put it in the years three, four, and five? But the bridges are unfunded, they're big expenses. They're like $5 million each. And we're hoping to get bridge replacement grant funds to do it, but until then, I think it's, it's a non-project. So yeah, we capture it as a need, but it's not identified for funding within a five-year timeframe.
Because the reason I bring it up is the Delmar Bridge is not on, the one over Antelope Creek. I drive on that one almost every day, and it's got a big...
Yeah, I think that's a surface distortion. I'm not sure the...
You think so? Okay. I wasn't sure if the bridge is...
Which we can probably fix with the Delmar paving we do this year.
Clarification for something you said earlier with the train crossing on Taylor. It sounded like you said that that wasn't happening anymore? Or is it just, I thought we had approved something where it was sort of happening with some, more in the future?
Yeah.
But the way that you just made it sound like it's not happening at all.
Yeah, it's a little unfortunate, but there's a lot of work that goes into coordinating with the railroad and the CPUC and the reviews and the design and getting it to be what they want it to be. We went to council and we said, hey, how about if we just do these partial improvements? And then you can let us have these two lanes, and then we'll do the rest of these improvements, and we'll commit to the whole thing, but we'll do these first and those second. I was trying to do that as a strategy to get it done ahead of Costco opening so that we could have our two lanes in each direction. And it just, again, the inability to work with them in a timely manner, I just, and then, and then you have the administrative burden of trying to manage two projects that involve the railroad and the CPUC, and it just, so I've mashed those back together as a single project now. And it, there was also a traffic study that said most of what Costco generates in the way of traffic is heading back out to 80. Not a lot of it's going north on Sierra College. And so it may be, and it's kind of turned out that way. The traffic impacts weren't as ominous as it might have been. So, but it is a priority, and we'll move forward. It's just going to be a longer-term effort.
A couple of quick things with the corporate, the EV charger in the corp yard, and then also the purchase of the EV, the electric cars for the town. The Air Pollution Control District and Pioneer both help support those things, so we should definitely take advantage of them with those we could possibly bring down to $0 with their support. So I think we should, make sure you look into that. There's a, there's a traffic signal at Sierra College and Bankhead that we're investigating.
Yeah.
And I would really like to coordinate with the schools district on that because if they're, because I don't know what their plan is with the Sierra College property, but if they're going to put in a signal and they were going to put a signal right before that, I think that would be not preferred. And so if we could coordinate something where we just get one signal in, that would be awesome, but I don't, I don't know how to do it.
Yeah.
But if it could be done...
We would do a signal warrant study first to make sure it's warranted, but then, yeah, assuming it was, we'd move forward with that.
We have, in the plan, there's an ADA transition plan and then the impact fee study. Me personally, I would like to see those moved up and happen much sooner. The impact fee study, I think is, I mean, both of those, I think, are important enough to move up. Thank you for clarifying about the money because I was reading through that one table and it looked three years out, everything went naked. And I was like, this is not good. Why are you, why are we even considering this? But thank you for clarifying that. So it, this is, it's just a plan, and if everything gets, if I'm understanding correctly, if everything that we choose, if everything that's in here gets built out, we're definitely going to be in the, in the red.
Right, yeah.
But that's probably not going to happen because we're only looking at the next two years. Okay.
Yeah.
And then the last thing, the security camera system upgrades, you listed them, and they were in two different places, and they were on there, and I looked and it's on your short term, but then in another table, it's listed as being on hold.
I think, yeah, it was an existing project on hold, and this, like I said, this was getting it done in time to get the agenda out on Friday.
But it is happening.
And we had discussions, and there's, it was originally, I think, just the depot, and then it was, well, let's expand it to all town facilities. And Dave is saying there's issues with security and we should do that now, and so it'll be a short-term project.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Otherwise, I want to say thank you. This document was amazingly easy to read. I was so, like, I was, when I saw the thickness of it, I was very disappointed, and then when I went through it, I was like, oh man, I finished it in 15, 20 minutes. I was like, this is great. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for all your hard work, and we will miss you.
My pleasure.
Yes. Can I go next? So this is nothing against the CIP. I think you guys did an excellent job. I really like it. It's very colorful. It was very easy to read. I just want to mention a couple of the intersections because I'm a broken record, and I've been saying this since I was in the planning commission, and I guess they're still kind of low priority, but hopefully in the future, there's four. So Brace Road, obviously, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be fixed on there. I mean, I saw a couple of things on here that you have brace for future projects, but I just want to say that road, people drive way too fast, and there needs to be, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to get that to be safe and monitoring, things like that. Then the other three, or my community, actually, that's why I'm a broken record. So obviously, the no-brainer is Sierra College and Bankhead. Like you said, that's dangerous. You can't even turn left out of that anymore. And I used to be able to before, like, three years ago, before COVID, I think you could, and there was like never any traffic, but now it's like you're basically committing suicide just to turn left.
Yeah.
And the other two are, like I said, in my neighborhood, the corner of Saunders where the church is, I've seen people get in car accidents right there. That is a dangerous public safety situation because it's a blind curve where, and I live right, like, near there, so I'm like going this way, somebody's cutting down the center, and like oftentimes people swerve, they hit each other. And the other one, which affects a lot of people because we close down Webb for events, is this corner literally right here. I don't know what's going on there, if we need to cut those trees or how the people, the law firm cut the trees, but I've seen people get almost in wrecks. I saw a kid get hit. I don't know if you guys remember that, when the kid got hit literally right there because somebody was driving up and he was walking and they hit him, and he fell flat on his back. That was a couple of years ago. That definitely needs to be updated because you cannot see around that corner. It's severely dangerous, so...
Are you talking about Webb and Taylor?
Webb and King right there. So when you come down to the intersection, there's a blind curve when you come down Webb, right there before...
Webb and King.
Yeah.
Webb and Taylor.
So...
Webb and King.
Webb's right here.
Yep.
And there's that bushy, whatever that is. And I know that it's private property. You want to, I mean, I get it. You want to kind of hide your, you know, your investment kind of thing there. But it's dangerous because you can't see around that area, and people come way too fast. I turn left there to go down Saunders, and there's been times where I've almost gotten hit because the people can't see us coming up the street, especially when the sun's setting. So I just kind of want to put, make those go on the list for next time because they are very dangerous. We have a lot of extra money sitting around, so please.
Yeah, there's things like curve advisory signs you can put up, but a lot of times you can't dictate driver behavior. I mean, people that speed, speed...
Well, tickets.
Yeah.
I hate to say that. I hate to say that. In the olden days, you had the California stop on that corner, and I will say that because I was in high school. Literally, there was a cop always sitting there, and if you didn't come to a complete stop, they would give you a ticket, what happened there.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Sorry, Potsy County sheriffs, but...
Money, contract.
Money, contract. Maybe we need that. Maybe quite now, but...
Meryl, I'd just like to say thank you. This is a, an exemplary body of work that you have completed. And to also compliment Amy because without her figures, you couldn't put together your plans, not knowing where you stood financially. And so, and to, not to overexhale Wes's virtues, but thank you for hiring Amy because she was...
Yeah. You guys did a good job.
It's a, it was sorely needed, and especially, like I say, after Rogers' passing, we were in a, in a difficult situation because how do you make decisions without knowing where you stand? And so, thank you, Amy. Thank you for working with Meryl. Meryl, I wish you well. Enjoy your retirement. You're a good man.
Thank you.
You are. Hate goodbyes.
We still have one.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, thank you so much. Like, I love the, I mean, it's very comprehensive, but simple, you know, simple at the same time. That's, like you said, it's easy to read. And I like, I appreciate the transparency of it, like where the money's going, when it's being completed, all of those things. So just, I appreciate you, and I just, I just appreciate your demeanor all the time. You just have always been so pleasant and so willing to answer the questions. So thank you so much.
I guess I'm next.
Uh-oh, here we are.
No. No. I think you should be very proud of the work you did and the difference that you made in our town. I really do appreciate, and you were always willing to step up and listen and talk to us, talk to the people, talk to the staff, so I just really thank you. This document is easy to read, I agree. I really, I enjoyed it. I liked numbers, so that was really fun. I had just a couple of questions. The, and I, I think I saw it in here, but I'm not sure. You know the area on Laird and Brace that's all funky?
Laird and Brace, yeah.
Where is that fixed in here?
So we're going to fix that as part of the 2024 street resurfacing project.
Street resurfacing.
Yeah, so that'll get done this summer. And that was kind of a lesson learned with the rubber, limitations of a rubber chip seal, that on a, they have some really sharp 90-degree turns that have a lot of truck traffic, and it just, that, that treatment doesn't hold up to heaving, those motions. And that's actually one of the reasons I stopped short on Sierra College and King at the intersection there is because I didn't want that breaking motion to do the same thing. And so we're going to pave that this summer as well with asphalt, and that'll get the same treatment.
Just wanted to make sure it was in here. Thank you.
Yep, yep, yep.
And then I really did question, we have to wait till 2026 to fix the door, to get our, a new door done, really?
Oh, geez.
I just, we use this room all the time. I just, whatever, that's like, and then, well, I just, it's like something we use all the time.
Remember when the wind blew it open, that one meeting? It was in January? We were here, and the wind literally blew it open, and it was really scary. Yeah, it needs to be fixed.
Just a couple of quick other things. The, still in the existing projects is the Del Maro graffiti wall.
Oh, boy.
And I'm not sure if we had that discussion with this council. Like, I get whether it was previous councils, but I know it's way out there, but also we have talked about putting a sign on the Chamber property, electronic sign, once we get our zoning ordinance is updated. And I'm wondering, it's not on here, and I'm wondering if we could possibly swipe those out or some, I mean, I don't know. The graffiti wall doesn't seem like something the town needs to be paying for. It's something that maybe a community project could happen, or a Boy Scout, Eagle Scout project or something, but I...
We could ask the staff to...
Wouldn't you want to, you want to do that?
Take it off, or...
Well, we've talked about an electric, electronic board being put on the Chamber property. We cannot have, it's not in our ordinance to have it in town. We don't want electric signs all over town. But on our own property, we talked about, Danny, do you recall this? I don't think this, this council was, it was previous. We talked about changing the ordinance to allow electronic signs on our...
And Jan was there too.
Yeah, she's shaking her head, so...
So anyway, I didn't see that in here, and I know that's in the...
Yeah, we can put it in either year three, which, you know, you're not so mindful of a budget.
Whether we do it or not, I just think it should be in there, so it's...
Or we can add it to the very back where you list the needs and that are future projects.
Future projects, okay, that'd be great.
Okay.
And then I had one other question on the, on the...
Should I... She's done, yeah.
The park development page, I don't know, at the back here, the Excel sheet, the Excel, and you have $60,000 each year. Is that an estimate of what kind of fees we're going to bring in?
It is.
So it's not anything to do with what we already have?
Correct.
You're estimating each year we're going to get 60, and then we're going to basically...
Right. It's kind of a guess based on historical revenue and what we saw this year. And so then you kind of project that forward, assuming that you're going to have the same level of development that comes in to continue to fund it, more or less at that level, yeah.
We're going to save it up, and then we're going to look at possibly doing a bathroom at sunrise and possibly fixing the circulation of the water park. If I read the numbers this...
Right.
Yes? And if, then, if the state comes and says we need to do something with the water park sooner, we will come back and, and adjust and ask, okay? Because I, I don't want to see the water park get closed. I don't want us to be reacting to something that happened because we didn't plan to do that. It's something that's super important to our, we don't have a park in wreck, and I think it's something important to our downtown, so...
And again, the nice thing about your CIP projects is that you can always bring something forward at any time. And then assuming that you have enough in the fund balance, you can appropriate the money to then take that on. So if the need arises within the next, within a shorter timeframe, you can just create a project, appropriate it. You could even defund projects, deprioritize and say, hey, let's, let's not do these two, free those funds up, and then we'll fund the water park.
Right. So during our annual council...
I mean, you do this every two years comprehensively, like we've done here, but you can do it throughout the year as well.
Okay.
So I'm going to pause this for a second, and I want to see if we can get a motion to extend this out for a half an hour? You think that's sufficient?
I'm almost done.
Well, because we have a couple of things, still, we have to do like committee reports and things like that, so can we get a motion to at least extend it for a half an hour just at the most, or it might just be 10 minutes, but...
I'll make a motion to extend it a half hour to 10:30.
Okay.
I second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye. Now, Meryl, sorry to interrupt you, you can keep talking.
I don't, I think that that was, you answered some of my other questions, like the light that's going to go on the sign in the corner of Sierra College and Taylor is still coming, and Richard's going to fix that for me, right? All right. And then you answered all my other questions.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, we can, okay, well, that's why we extended it. So let's do public comment.
What's your jam? Is there anything to say?
Yeah.
I do too.
Okay.
Jan, Clark Kurt, 6500 Wishingwell Way.
Jan Clark Crutt, 6500 Wishingwell Way, thank you so much, Meryl, and I loved working with you, you've been great for our town, and what I love most, well, I live a lot, but, you have your vest on, and we see you out there working, hands on, and, you know, we really appreciate, at least I really appreciate, appreciate your work. Thank you for this. Um, just a couple things, if we could go back in your presentation, if that's okay, I don't know if we can do that, but I'm doing a public comment. Um, some of the original dollar amounts that were coming up, I just saying, for a point of clarification, just might need to be.
Okay, where am I going to begin?
Go to where he has the red, white, and blue, very beginning.
Oh.
There you go. So, the numbers on the left-hand sides of those corners, and the numbers of the right, they're skewed, right? They're, they're not supposed to equal? So the 16, the 1.6 million, if you add up the numbers to the right, it's gonna be like 1.650. So it's just a little confusing. So just for a point, and maybe for the public, it might be more confusing to have that number there, because sometimes when you look and you say, oh, the welcome sign, you go over there, and it's 1.4 million, so it just might be easier to kind of take that off.
She's a number woman.
So, that's all on that. Um, and then, question for our biggest item, which is the overpass, and you say $6 million. When did that number arrive? How old is that number? And I know we're having a study, will that number change?
Yeah, that's, okay, so.
The improvements that we're looking at now are, are probably a roundabout. There, there was a study that Wood Rogers did, that was the recommended alternative, and that's the one that we're, we're probably moving forward with. Um, that said, there's a project study report that'll look at all different alternatives, and, and it may be, um, they'll, they'll price right away, because it's a real comprehensive document.
Right, because it may, we're gonna widen it, we may lift it up.
Right, but the, the, if the roundabout is the preferred alternative, that's, that's a six, six and a half million dollar construction cost, is what the latest numbers are showing.
Okay. Um, thank you very much, and let's see what else was I gonna ask you? I wanna hear the rest of the public comments too, but, great job, we're gonna miss you, and welcome award.
Thank you, Jan. All right, come on up, Cheryl.
Cheryl Betson, Brace Road. I, I know that King is declared, you don't, you can't drive trucks down there, and it's really in bad shape right now, but you can't go down trucks there now. Brace Road is declared a truck route.
Right.
And it's destroyed.
Yep.
You know this, your drawing you did, by the way, is great, and yes, he's very good to work with. He's a really nice guy.
We're gonna miss him.
But, they, um, Brace Road has just been that way, in 2016, it was submitted to the Placer County, it's really needing work then. There's also a lot of other things that are going on, you know, they dug that road up twice a week during Costco. My concern is, I thought Cricket said that part of that money from Costco was gonna go to fix that part of the road. What happened?
Go ahead.
So Costco has an obligation to do half-street frontage improvements, which they did, so they built the long brace, they had the, the new, um.
Yes.
Road widening, that's their responsibility, but then they also pay developer impact fees that go into these different buckets that we talked about.
Right.
And, and so, like, one of those buckets is a Sierra College, they paid $400,000 into the Sierra College Fund, um, they paid $1 million into the road circulation fund.
Mm-hmm, it's going down Brace.
And, and we're actually using some of that money to fund what we're trying to do on Brace.
Yeah, it's, it's really bad.
Yeah, so that's.
I'm not just, you know what, I've lived there a long time, and you know I live on Brace. It's in bad shape, it's gotten in really bad shape, and mostly because you have, it's used as a truck route.
Yep.
I could show you cameras, it, it's like these trucks at nighttime, they're coming down there, and they're breaking all the water pipes in the road. So how much damage is it doing, because it's a truck, truck route? What can we do about that? Is there something? I heard it's hard, CHP, something, the other, but why do we have to have that road declared a truck route?
We, we can look at that. I, I know there's limitations on weight at the Brace Road Bridge, that they're not allowed to have heavy trucks, but.
They're not, and people are driving over that bridge far exceeding that, and you know that, and I've looked at the stats on that bridge, and they're bad.
Yeah.
But it's goo, it's still holding up, but as long as these people, there's no enforcement. Um, Brian Baker knows about it, he, he tried to get into this.
Oh, I remember that.
Yeah, they, they, you know, they need to, they're, it's hard to do enforcement, you know that, we all know about enforcement, we all gotta be good people, but I really wanna know why they're not doing something about the trucks that go down there that are ruining the road. I'm, I'm gonna tell you, the water lines on the last two years, in a period, in a stretch of maybe three blocks, have broken like four or five times. Water squirting all over the place, plumbing is broke.
The, the good news is Brace is funded, we have a grant, and we're matching it, and it'll be hopefully by the end of this summer. Um, it's a federal project, we have a NEPA clearance process. We're actually bringing to the next meeting the possibility of, of eliminating parking to create bike lanes on both sides of Brace.
I know, I like your idea.
Yeah.
We looked at that, we both looked at it, and actually looks like it'll be good. I, I think that's a great thing.
Yeah.
But, at the same time, it needs to be done at some time. I mean, I can tell you that the piece of prop, the, the, right in front of my house, in the entire 30 years I've lived here, nobody's ever done anything. In 30 years.
It's, it's kind of, yeah.
So.
I forgot to start the timer, I'm sorry.
Oh, gee, guys, that's your fault.
My fault, that's.
I did, I did, you guys, thank you very much. Take it easy, Meryl.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question, um, to that, um, obviously, I guess she would have to answer, she wouldn't be able to? So, when she talks about the semis going down Brace, are they going down to go through Laird, to go out to Granite Bay, or are they using that as a turnaround to get on the freeway to go like to Auburn? Like, take the Reno exit? When they come down Brace? I'm just curious, because it does make a difference.
All the way up Lard, they're coming down, Brian Baker knows all about this, we talked about.
That's dangerous.
It is, and it's, it, the same trucks go through all night long, you'll, you'll see them. I can show you video camera, but, big trucks.
Well, with, yeah, with that being said, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Got to put them in some, they don't abide by that.
As far as I know, it's, it's, um, King, and, um, you don't have a lot of.
Yeah, well, I'm just mentioning that because, you know, it's a public safety situation, because that corner, like, I mean, I used to drive that way to go to work, and like, you can, you barely drive like five miles an hour around that corner. I can't imagine a, a humongous double axle, whatever, driving around that corner, where you, it's quicker and safer to walk it, you know what I mean? You know the corner I'm talking about, where it's like the, how could?
All that nice road work and all the stuff down there that you're replacing right now, because it's all smashed in, trucks, big trucks.
Okay, any, I'm sorry to go on a tangent, but that is a public safety situation. Is there any more public comment? Anybody else wanna get up? Comment? Okay, what about on Zoom?
They have a chat.
Wow, that was really loud.
No, it's not.
Are the mics working better? It's really loud. Okay, all right, well, with that being said, I'm bringing it back to council. Why is it so loud?
Because you're leaning over it like this.
Oh, I'm sorry, everybody.
Uh, quick, just a quick, quick clarification with Jan's question, that $6 million for the, for the overpass, that's re, if I'm understanding correctly, that's just for the one half of it, right? It's not, it's not for the whole thing?
Correct.
Okay, so we're expecting, so $6 million isn't, I mean, I, because I heard it was like 14 million, at least, for the whole thing, but we're really only focused on the one.
The study reports, that, that don't have, you know, all the assumption.
Is that, is the study covering the whole thing? Or just that one half?
Uh, the study's supposed to cover both sides.
Okay.
That way, we don't have to go back and do the second half of the study, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, Meryl. I know the answer to that one.
Kane?
Yeah? I made a motion.
To do what?
Do whatever I'm supposed to do. Um, to approve the, to the, approve the CIP budget as presented? Does that sound fine?
I believe that your rec, your action will be to conditionally adopt the CIP pending planning commission confirmation of general plan consistency, authorizing the recommended budget amendments to the existing projects and appropriating funding for FY 24, 25, and 25, 26.
She have to read all that?
No, that's what you just said, that's what we're doing.
I just did.
That's the motion, yes.
I believe that was.
Sorry, Jeff.
That was my emotion, you heard it.
Yes, right, that's it.
I second.
I've been up since four.
I've been up since four. Okay.
Councilmember Nicely?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye. Okay, so the worst is over. Um, we are at council committee reports, which should be the funnest part of the meeting, pending. Who would like to go first? Let's start this way and go this way, okay.
She, she said she had nothing to report.
Okay.
Um, I wanted to say that I didn't hold my monthly meeting last, uh, set, the first, the first Saturday of June, because my son graduated from Del Oro, so.
Yay!
I'm happy for him. Now I'm old, because all my kids are out of high school.
Yes.
Um, but, and I'm not gonna be able to do the next one, because it's July 4th weekend, but I am planning to do it July, uh, June 29th, which is the last Saturday of, uh, June, so I'm gonna, if, assuming that this room is available, I'm gonna do that. Um, let's see, I didn't really have a whole lot of meetings, we're still working, we, I had a Pioneer meeting, and we're still working through the strategic plan for that. Um, I wanted to make a couple comments on that, uh, on Pioneer. Pioneer still has lower rates than PG&E, so if you're thinking about switching, you should definitely do that. Um, they are trying to increase their customer programs, uh, those include discounted LED bulbs, HVAC, um, inspection rebates, and a couple other things, and so if you're interested in any of those things, go on their website, and look under their, uh, customer rebates portions on their website, I don't quite know where to find it on there, but go on there and look. Otherwise, all the rest of my meetings are come, upcoming, so, that's all I have to report.
Um, so, a lot of my meetings were just kinda like the other two over here. I will say that I heard, I wasn't able to attend SP Mud, um, because I had, what was it? It was, I think, a family situation I, I had to deal with that day, but I will tell you, I heard that they are actually advertising for the general manager. Um, it is on the website, I'm not doing that as a, like an HR pitch, but I am a HR person, so, um, I'm all about, you know, telling people about openings, so, I'm just saying that I, that's a huge thing, because that's their general manager, they have put that up, that they're looking for somebody. Um, other than that, um, and I believe a lot of that was foreshadowed, because Aldo passed away, and a couple of the people that were on the actual committee, um, that, oh, that's what Thursday was, okay, yeah. Oh, and the swearing-in, okay, I will say that. So, um, not to steal your thunder and manor, because you can mention this too, I did go to something that's similar, I got invited to a swearing-in of a superior court judge, that's what I was doing, that's right, and then there was Aldo. Um, so, yeah, um, so that was me, um, I'm going to a leadership summit with the town manager, um, all the mayors in town, uh, town and city managers are going away for two days, wish me luck, because we have to hike, and it's in hellhole, I know I mentioned, I just like saying that. Um, anyways, I'll pass that on to Danny now, and he can.
I have nothing to report.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I'm glad that you mentioned, although I was just, I was literally just sitting here thinking that we should have mentioned that, but, um, I don't know if you guys know who Aldo Paneshi is, but he has, um, done a lot for Placer County. He passed away, um, I, I attended that funeral, it was very, um, moving to listen to all the people that he touched, um, so, hopefully, um, if you guys know who that is, or, you know, whatever, just, it was, it was a great, um, a great ceremony. Um, the only, um, committee that I have really a report on, I have my upcoming economic development, uh, coming up in a few days, but, um, I am the school liaison, and I've had a lot of really great meetings with, um, Alan, Erica, but this last one was, um, really exciting. We went on a, they took me on a tour of Placer Elementary, which was actually very, uh, kind of nostalgic for me, because that's where my children went, so, um, it was very interesting to see some things looked exactly the same, but they did, they have done so much, um, with, with very little. Um, the ingenuity of, of Al and his crew, and, um, the vision, the things that they have done, they have been extremely good stewards of, um, of what they have, but, um, those are some very old buildings, very, very old buildings, uh, and so, I'm, they have a lot of vision for what they wanna do in the future, so I'm really excited to, um, hopefully see that come to fruition, um, but, walking through and listening to the plans that they have, and, um, and the different, uh, scout projects that they have going on, I mean, it, they've, they have got a lot going on, it is not just a school, that is truly a community outreach type program, I mean, it is incredible. Um, so anyways, that's really all I have to say right now, but I was really, I was really, um, amazed by everything that they had going on, and I really appreciated them taking the time to give me that tour, and to talk about all their plans and their dreams, and, um, man, it's exciting, I mean, I, when I walked in and I was talking to the women at the front desk, um, they started immediately, when they found out that my kids went to school, they started busting out yearbooks and finding my kids, and it was, it was really